I will now hand to councillor Pandafini to read the acknowledgement of country.
I'd like to acknowledge that we are meeting on the land of the Bidjigal and Gadigal people who occupy the Sydney coast being the traditional custodians of this land that we are on. On behalf of Randwick local planning, on behalf of Randwick City Council, I acknowledge and pay my respects to the elders past and present and to any First Nations people in attendance today.
Councillor said to read the prayer.
Almighty God, we humbly beseech you to bestow your blessings upon this council and to direct and prosper your deliberations to the advancement of your glory and the true welfare of the people of the city of Randwick and Australia.
Thank you, now please be seated. Do we have any apologies or requests to join via audio visual link councillor Leach?
Councillor Olive is running a little bit late.
Okay, thank you very much, there being no further apologies. Can I now have the confirmation of the minutes dated the 22nd of November 2022, moved councillor Rosenfeld, seconded by councillor Luxford, all those in favour, all those against? Declare that carried declarations of pecuniary and non pecuniary interests, I'll begin with councillor Haye.
I would like to declare a significant pecuniary interest in item CS 7822, my wife Donna Bell has worked for intends to return to work for Nova Health which owns Randwick doctors medical centre on the corner of Waratah Avenue and Gilmour Road and I will not be voting in the matter.
Okay, thank you, the next speaker, is there anyone else, any other declarations? Councillor, you've got to keep your hand up, sorry, I can't see, I'll go to councillor Rosenfeld.
Okay, the first one is CPA 8022, I'm an investment unit in close proximity to the address discussed and hence have a pecuniary interest, I won't vote or debate on the item. CS 6622, I own a house in close proximity to the proposed Wall Street Plaza contained in the draft Maruba Junction public domain master plan. However, I'm declaring this as a non pecuniary interest as the amenity is not affected positively or negatively, hence I'll still debate and vote the matter as a non pecuniary interest.
Thank you, I saw a hand up from councillor Nielsen, councillor Nielsen?
Thank you ma'am, I need to declare a non significant non pecuniary interest in item CP 7922 as I'm a council delegate on the Sydney East Planning Panel. However, as I previously voted on this matter prior to being a delegate to the SEPP, would not be eligible to be a delegate on the panel for this matter, I will be voting on the matter tonight.
Thank you, councillor McCafferty, no, councillor Wilson?
I'd like to declare a non significant non pecuniary interest in CP 78 of 22, the owner of number one Barrick Street is known to me from various community organisations and lives reasonably close to me, I will be voting.
Thank you.
Sorry, ma'am, I should declare apart from being close to, living close to one Barrick Street, it'd be the similar declaration.
Thank you councillor Nielsen, are there any further declarations? I have one, I'm actually gonna have to later in the meeting get the exact text of it, CP 77/22, in line with my previous declarations with 11A Marsall Avenue, Coogee for the for the extension to the Moira Crescent Heritage Conservation area, I believe the owner is an acquaintance of my partner's aunt. Previously, I have declared a significant non pecuniary interest as I was unsure of the nature of the relationship, I've since found out that it is not particularly proximate, however, for consistency, I will not participate in the matter. With that, we'll now move on to the next item, the address, chairperson's announcement, I will read the privacy warning. In respect to the Privacy and Personal Information Protection Act, members of the public are advised that the proceedings of this meeting will be recorded for the purposes of clause 520 to 523 of Council's Code of Meeting Practice. Audiovisual recordings of meetings are prohibited without the express permission of council, a person may be expelled from the meeting for using or having used an audiovisual video recorder without the express authority of council. Now, now move to the announcement of speakers, all members of this evening's public meeting will have a maximum of four minutes in which to put their case with no extensions available, presenters will be stopped at the four minute mark once their time has expired. Councillors may ask questions of presenters at the end of each public submission, members of the public who are answering questions are not under an obligation to answer them if they choose not to. First speaker for the evening, in relation to CP 78/22, the planning proposal for new heritage items numbers one and three Berwick Street Coogee in the Randwick LEP, speaking in favour is Mr Cunningham, thank you.
Thank you ma'am, good evening councillors, I'm addressing on number one Berwick Street, I'm the owner and resident there, my family have lived there since 1966, it's only had two owners in that period of time. The building itself in terms of heritage is part of that Coogee development in the 1920s, people know that the trams went through to Coogee in the 1890s, but seen by this picture here from the 19, I believe in the 1940s, you'll note that the infill has started, on the right hand side is Berwick Street and all down that right hand side are residential houses and large families. The next slide will show that how it was in those times as an intersection, you'll note that the Dr Thompson, which is still a doctor's residence, Dr the doctor in there, I forget his name now, Dr Bransby, he's one of the old school ones who's still carrying on the practice, he actually does house calls. You'll note Dr Booth's house on to the far left at number 18 Carr Street, that is still intact as a residence but not as a doctor's residence. And number two is the dental surgery which is also up for tonight being number three Berwick Street, ours is number one Berwick Street on the corner. The architect, Mr Clancy, as you'll know from the notes, is a celebrated architect actually of Romanesque churches, that's what he's known for. In the book of history of Romanesque inspired architecture in Australia, he's known as the man responsible for 20 Romanesque churches and chapels from 1927 to 1942. And that's important because this one was built, even though it's got the Randwick municipality stamp of 1925, was built in 1926. He also collaborated on quite a few, but in our area, the Holy Family Church at Maruba was designed by Mr Clancy, St Patrick's Church, sorry Cathedral in Parramatta and Sir Christopher's Cathedral in Canberra. He's noted for a high quality brickwork, wheel windows, arched quabbles tables and all type of Clancy's buildings, many of which were apparently designed also by his assistant Rosette Edmonds. And that is prominent for our number one Berwick Street because Rosette Edmonds, one of the first few female architects in 1924, graduating from University of Sydney Architecture, the recent architecture programme, she started work for him in 1926 and she's renowned for design work and hand painting of designs. And there's another slide coming up which will show that, but she went on to be a prominent architect in her own right and was the first to produce as a woman's a document, sorry, a book in 1938, a textbook history of Western architecture history and all 95 elegant art deco styled illustrations in the book are by Edmund's hand. Given that Clancy began work on the chapels in 1927, this showing the interior upstairs of one Berwick Street.
Look, I'll allow all those in favour, all those against, declare that carried, thank you, please continue, extension for two minutes.
Clancy is known for, this may be one of his last residential commissions in 1926, he's also known in the area for other things than this. He was the architect for the St Michael's Golf Course, which is a collection, interesting story that the club history says that they met the owner who had a pastoral lease, shook hands on a purchase for £1,000, the following week, Mr Clancy, Will Corey and Mr Vaughan arranged with an axeman to clear a path through the dense shrub. Mr Moran leading the way with his walking stick to kill the snakes, we laid out the pegs for the original St Michael's Golf Course. At the time, the area had not been surveyed and in my humble opinion, Mr Clancy's achievement bordered on the miraculous, that's from the club history of St Michael's. But he's also known for the extension at the Brown Nurses, which was commissioned by the Archbishop and it was written up as being in the art deco style for two tone brickwork, sharp horizontal lines, the three winged building forms a courtyard around the original timber cottage and that building's still standing up there at the Brown Nurses in Dudley Street. The number one Berwick Street has that unusual Greek key design, the slide before might show that. Is there any way to go back? That design shows a Greek key design whereby the building is broken up into segments, there's also Greek key features in the pastoral work on the ceiling, tiles in the kitchen and tiles in the bathroom. Why I think, I've just one more sentence to finish.
One more sentence?
This is rare in the area, the current eight blocks that form the Coogee precinct have 1,834 dwellings, there are now only 35 houses in those 1,835. 97% are units, I think the houses and semis should be protected in the Coogee precinct.
Thank you, are there any questions to the speaker, there being no questions to the speaker, thank you very much.
Thank you ma'am, thank you councillors.
Now appearing via audio visual link, speaking in favour, Mr Ryan Elliott.
Thank you ma'am and thank you for the opportunity to speak today, my name's Ryan Elliott, I'm an owner of a unit in 109 Berwick Street. The neighbours in one, five and seven Barrick, as well as 109 and 111 Mount Street are supportive of heritage listing for one and three Barrick Street. We had previously sought an interim heritage order for three Barrick Street which we viewed as at risk, at risk which was proven to be founded when the tenant was served notice of vacate and the developer owner of number three sought to demolish the building via complying development certificate, which was received by only one neighbour on the 13th of October, postmarked the 11th of October, the letter itself postdated the 29th of September, some 12 days earlier. In March 2019, three and a half years ago, the owner of one Barrick Street emailed council and asked for heritage consideration for numbers one, three and five Barrick Street. By reply, the council committed to review these properties. In June 2020, council instructed extent heritage to review these properties in Randwick, as a result of Covid, this was largely on a desktop basis. In July 2020, a different developer to the current owner submitted a DA to demolish both three and five Barrick Street and an interim heritage order was granted in December 2020 on number five to allow for its heritage to be reviewed. By March 2021, the extent heritage final report provided to council recommending heritage listing for five Barrick Street. By May 2021, council resolved to exhibit five Barrick Street as a heritage item in the LEP and also resolved to set aside appendix B for the extent report, which includes numbers one and three Barrick Street for future inventory review, due to desktop analysis of Covid. City Plan Heritage report to council in June 2022 says that one Barrick Street has heritage merit and in October 22, City Plan report that three Barrick Street has heritage being five of the criterion, A, B, C, F and G. So it meets the criterion, to date 2019 to 2022, the neighbours have fought long and hard for the preservation of our heritage. We thank the support of Coogee precinct, Randwick Heritage Action Group, councillors and council staff who have all followed due process, all of which have been a matter of public record. At present, number five Barrick Street is now owned by a private individual, Andrew Who's at council tonight, Tua Tania, who cherish their heritage home, the previous developer having sold up to them. The owner of number one Barrick Street, Mr Cunningham who just spoke, has been patiently waiting since 2019 for their heritage to receive. The challenge here is the new owner of number three, another property developer who recently acquired the property, seeks to demolish number three Barrick Street under a new DA lodged in September 2022. I don't want to focus on the new proposal for two semi-detached dwellings at four stories on a 15 meter wide block, presenting as colour bond shipping containers, which are proposed to replace the 1920s home. More to seek the protection of three Barrick Street and ensure that the symphony between numbers one, three and five remains uninterrupted. In the planning panel last week where the heritage proposal was supported, I was offended when the developers representative called me a nimby. I'm passionate about Coogee and I've made representations to council on traffic safety, economic strategy, stormwater, the scenic foreshore, all but to name a few. Three Barrick Street is a rare and interesting property constructed in 1924 for Coogee's first dentist surgery, operating for 95 years. It presents in a trilogy of three 1920s buildings, one, three and five Barrick Street and it's located diagonally across the road from the heritage listed. one, three and five Barrick Street, and it's located diagonally across the road from the heritage listed Federation doctors surgery. The streetscape of sandstone wall, which the DA seeks to demolish in its entirety, is enjoyed by many. And the trio stand at the gateway to Coogee Village as buses pass down Carr Street into Hadlock Avenue and down to the beach, stopping outside these fine examples of nineteen twenties heritage homes. One of the residents at seven Barrick Street was able to fill a petition with a few hundred signatures, seeking the heritage listing of number three Barrick Street in fairly short order. I'll wrap up, Mayor, because I'm out of time. Um, we respectfully seek heritage listing of one and three Barrick Street. We're looking for unanimous support from the councillors, acknowledging the positive outcome of both the council commissioned independent heritage report and the planning panel. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions to the speaker? There being no questions, thank you very much, Mr Elliott.
Thank you.
We now move to CS sixty seven twenty two, Community High Performance Centre naming request, Heffron Centre, speaking for Mr Adam Cosgrove.
Thank you, Mayor, and good evening councillors. On about the twenty eighth of October, our CEO Blake Solley submitted a request to council for the potential naming of the Heffron Centre, or at least the Rabidows portion of the Heffron Centre, as per the agreement for lease. That brand that we've been in deep discussions with in recent months is USANA Health Services, founded out of the USA, Utah specifically. Uh, they're a global health sciences company, manufacturing vitamins, health products and skincare products. The, uh, I guess the, the process we undertook to find a, a partner that fit the values and the brand fit that the Rabidows seek for a partnership of this nature and significance, took us on a journey to find a number of brands who were of a global nature with good standing and, and in this case a, a market cap nearing a, um, one point five billion dollars US. They've got two thousand staff worldwide. Um, and their values align extremely well with the Rabidows, values of excellence and community, integrity and health. Um, and we're seeking support from the council, councillors and mayor tonight to name that portion of the facility when the centre is completed in, in March or April.
Thank you very much, Mr Cosgrove. Are there any questions to the speaker? Mr Sid, councillor Sid and then councillor Rosenfeld.
Hi, Mr Cosgrove. Um, I just wanna re, uh, just ask you this. Is it right that Souths are probably the only club that aren't relying on poker machine revenue though? If not the only one?
Yeah, one of two or three.
Yeah. So they don't have any poker machine revenue, uh, so they're relying on sponsorship, yes?
Yeah, we rely on our own revenue streams to support the club.
And also, did, when looking for a sponsor, did the, the, uh, the Rabidows know of our policy against gambling? Fossil fuels, fast foods, et cetera?
We, we did, um, and when, uh, we, we made a recent decision on the front of our jersey, we had a wagering sponsor and this was not in line with, you know, council's policy, it was a decision we made wholeheartedly on our own. Uh, we chose a global, um, motor vehicle manufacturer over a gambling company who are offering us significantly more money per annum over a longer term. Um, so we, um, like you, um, are trying to eliminate or minimise the impact of, um, gambling and, um, sports wagering specifically, particularly in rugby league.
Councillor Rosenfeld.
Thank you.
What the importance of sponsorship as far as the revenue stream and the, and the, and the, as far as the importance of, of the revenue comes in from, from sponsors are two bottom line?
It's, it's significant, I think, um, most rugby league clubs would be the same. Our, our sponsorship and corporate revenue specifically, uh, brings in more revenue for the club than membership, ticketing and merchandise combined. Um, and it's an ever growing revenue stream and when we're looking at increasing, you know, opportunities for pathways players, growing our community programmes and obviously improving our product in the field, it's an extremely important revenue stream.
Thank you. Councillor Beach?
Um, thanks very much for coming in. Uh, it's good to have an opportunity to, you know, hear a little bit more, um, um, about what you're doing. Look, I hadn't heard of the company before at all and so I did what most people do and Googled it. Uh, and obviously the first thing comes up is, you know, the nutritional products and so on, which seem quite legitimate. But I have to say I was quite concerned and, and raised, uh, sent a few emails through to the mayor and, and general manager and so on. Because I did discover that that company does operate as a multi level sort of marketing scheme. And, you know, I actually, I, I went a bit further than just going. This came up quite quickly when I, when I Googled it and I thought I'll try and verify it, I'll go to the annual report, so. I'm getting to the question, thank you, but fair enough. So I guess, uh, given that even its annual report does have extensive information about that structure and how it derives its revenue. You know, what do you see in common with Souths? Because there's many really dedicated Souths fans, obviously. In our LGA, they're going to be really looking forward to this building. It has been controversial, but I know there's a very big fan base out there. And some of them, you know, I guess, may wonder why this is now going to be branded in that way. I, I guess I'd like to know more about why you would want to associate with this company where there may be some question marks over it. Thank you.
Sure. Uh, look, initially, um, the discussion to sponsor or partner with the Rabidows was born out of the desire to provide the team with, um, some of the nutritional supplementation, you know, multivitamins, magnesium proteins that the team are already using and purchasing. Um, so there was already a natural fit, we do those types of product alignment, you know, sponsorships with a number of different brands. Um, and then, um, as the conversation progressed, um, it became quite clearly a, a link between, you know, a company who are providing health and nutritional opportunities for their community to, to be one that they could be providing for ours, you know, such as, you know, I guess the association with the, the centre was one, knowing how big our local community is, including the sports team and, you know, Randwick City Council, but also the fact that they are passionate about educating people about being healthy themselves and have offered to, you know, provide um, free consultations and workshops for, for people on site if, um, you know, that'll be promoted through our channels and the broader channels as well.
Uh, thank you. I guess I would just like to ask, were there any concerns expressed within the Souths management about the business model of this company at all? And were they ever raised and did anyone actually question?
No. Look, we, we did discuss it, um, and it's not what you would see as a, I know you're talking about multi level, but your traditional old school multi level companies that, uh, you know, for want of a better term, are called a pyramid scheme. This is one level below, it's, they've got what they call associates who are contracted and commissioned by the company to sell products on their behalf. That's, they're not recruiting others beneath them to provide their own revenue streams.
Thank you. Um, I, okay, I actually have a series of hands, so I'm gonna go to councillor Luxford, then councillor Bruce, then councillor Nielsen, then councillor Chapel. That's the order which I saw.
Just a question to you, was there not an Australian company that provides nutritional supplements, et cetera, et cetera, that you could have gone with rather than a US based company?
Um, I've been working in sponsorship for a number of years and there are a hundred and forty plus rights holders and sports teams in the, in the country seeking sponsorship dollar and, the economy in Australia doesn't always support every single brand in Australia supporting and sponsoring every single local team, so there are global partnerships in place and particularly one of this, this size in nature. Um, we have discussed with a number of different brands in similar categories and there were never any partnerships available. It all comes down to, uh, timing and budget.
Councillor Bruce.
Uh, thank you, Adam. Uh, just a, a couple of quick questions. Firstly, the, the company, um, how quickly has it grown in the last five years? Do you have any figures on that?
I don't have the exact data on that. Uh, they're thirty, thirty years old. Um, there's significant, um, growth coming in Australia and obviously they've seen, their, their growth here probably hasn't matched that of overseas and their alignment with us is to, um, I guess assist them in growing their brand, um, which carries with, the partnership carries with, with its significant broadcast assets, you know, on Free to Air and, and Fox Sports, so it's about a, a brand growth strategy as well.
And, and also the, um, the four year extension, how confident are you that they, they would go to a four year extension? Is there anything that would prohibit that from happening?
I'm always confident. Um, I think we've got best in class servicing and account management of all our sponsors, our retention rates are really high. And I feel like, um, you know, the, the Community High Performance Centre is gonna be a new part of Rabidows history. We've, we've never been in the same premises together in a hundred and fourteen years and I feel like, um, it's gonna provide an opportunity for all of us to grow together, so I feel like I'm really confident that I'll extend.
Thank you. Councillor Nielsen.
You have sort of indicated that you're anticipating that the sponsorship will continue for quite some time. However, my reason for not approving what you're proposing, I'll be quite frank with you, is the fact that I don't believe there's any way that you can carry this name forward confidently indefinitely. Like you might be able to, uh, say to us with fairly, you know, fairly confident of within the next ten years. Well, I put it to you so that with a building like this, admittedly this is not the external signage and so on and so forth, but the question is coming, my dear. Oh, sorry, fellow councillor, sorry.
Councillors will ask a question and refer to each other at, by their official titles. Thank you.
Councillor Hamilton, I apologise. Um, yeah, my concern is the fact that you will not be able to guarantee the name verification for longer than perhaps ten years at the most. And I feel very strongly, and I'm gonna put it to my councillors when we are coming to the vote, that we should be assuming that the name that you will select is a name that will stand in posterity. Isn't there some way that you can do that, please? I have point of order, I've asked the question.
She had, look, what, what I will do is I'll throw to the speaker i- if, if you would like to answer.
Sure. Um, look, this, this will be, if signed, the longest initial and extended term contract in sponsorship for the Rabidows, so, um, I'm, I'm confident that um, obviously the, the four plus four is, is going to be one of the biggest, you know, term sign on a sponsorship contract more than our major partnership deals. And I think one of the suggestions that we've provided, um, to the councillors and to Todd was to incorporate the Rabidows name into the naming, which other clubs like the West Tigers have not done.
Just a follow up question, because I'm gonna put it in my reason for not going with what you're wanting to do.
Short concise question, councillor Nielsen.
I'm going to ask a question, Mr Mayor. Whatever. I'm a councillor and I'm just asking a question, thanks councillor, just, yeah, excuse me, back to you, so. Is there some reason why you cannot choose a name that we all, I'm not a Rabidows member, but I'm an official supporter. Um, I did say prayers for you and, you know, you got some bad decisions just recently. However, isn't, is there some reason why you chose not to go with a name? You've got so many famous names associated with your eminent club. I respectfully put to you that we would all feel happier having a name associated with a former prominent person. Is there any reason why you could not have chosen such a solution?
Thank, thank you, thank you. Hold on. Uh, I suspect councillor Hamilton, before you do, you're gonna suggest that councillor Nielsen did not. Okay, she, she, she did, she did, she did. She, she did.
She's too long winded, I accept, I'm sorry.
I, I think councillor Nielsen does acknowledge that to the speaker, if you would like to answer.
Yeah, sure, I think, um, there are commercial realities, um, you know, we have a contribution to the High Performance Centre, the which we need to fulfil. In order for the building to be, um, uh, built, um, we have an, an existing High Performance Centre partner at Redfern, um, as we described in the initial email for request from Todd. Um, and under the, the lease for agreement, we have an opportunity to name outside of the premises. And, you know, as we discussed before, the, um, the fact that we don't have somewhere between five and eight million dollars provided to us by a lease club each year means that we need to maximise every opportunity from our consumer pillars across membership, ticketing and merchandise and our corporate partnerships and, and this is one.
But can't you be, or could you be happy with, or is there anything to prevent you, sorry? I'm doing a follow up question.
Sorry, sorry, hold on, councillor Nielsen, I will hear the point of order.
I, I find that councillor Nielsen is argumentative with the speaker. The speaker's exhausted all questions from previous quest, like from previous councillors. And I believe that councillor Nielsen is continuing to debate and argue with the speaker and should end.
Uh, I, I do think that councillor Nielsen enrolling on the point of order is verging very close to our argumentation. However, I, I'll ask you if she does have a follow up question to ask the question.
Thank you. Is there any reason why you cannot, or put it in a positive way? You, you would be able to put sponsorship names up within the four walls of where your facility is. So wouldn't that be sufficient to meet your sponsorship's requirement? If there is a need, which I accept that unfortunately in the world of reality, there is a need.
Yeah, in, in this case, no, the, the, the naming in connection to the facility is really important for the, the sponsorship to go ahead. We, you know, like you in terms of thinking, have, uh, discussed the naming of certain portions of the facility inside the four walls, including rooms, classrooms, et cetera, named after legends and past players, which we will do so upon completion.
So, sorry, can I just ask a follow up question? So are you saying that there is a potential for you to lose the sponsorship?
Point of order.
Sorry, I will hear the point of order.
The point of order is the fact that I just, I just expressed a concern that councillor Nielsen is arguing, arguing with the speaker and she just stood up to say, I will ask you again. So that's how she just started her question. So if she's already asked the question, she doesn't need to continue to ask it.
Sorry, ho- hold on, before, before, before you continue, look, I, I have to admit, I did miss those words in, in terms of, that's not to say it didn't occur, I just, I missed it. Um, ca- councillor Nielsen, the, the, what I would suggest is in your questioning, i- is there anything further that you actually require from this and in light of the fact that we do need to progress?
I did want to clarify, um, I might not change my point of view, but I did want to clarify with the speaker who is representing the club to clarify the fact.
So, so, sorry, thank, thank you, hold on. So, so councillor Nielsen, councillor Nielsen, hold on, councillor Nielsen, thank you.
Could you ask the man?
Sorry, hold on. Councillor Nielsen, I have councillors yelling across the chamber, which meant that I couldn't actually hear you because they were yelling across the chamber as it results to their view around it. There's no reflection on that, I couldn't, I, I understand that. Part of it is because I have councillors who are making comments across the table, which meant I can't actually hear councillor Nielsen in terms of her questions. I understand that there may be frustration there, however, um, I couldn't actually hear and I'm being asked a rule on points of orders which are related to it. So councillor Nielsen, could you please continue your question?
Thank you. It was just really a clarification and I might have misheard you, sorry, so I just wanted a clarification. Would you lose your sponsorship from this, um, prominent sponsor that you've, you've got? Um, if they did not have naming rights to this facility, to the performance centre?
Yes, there's a chance.
But there's a chance?
Yeah.
Yeah, but in every other way you wouldn't. Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much councillor Nielsen. Uh, I had a hand up from councillor Chapel, then there is councillor D'Souza.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Um, I will ask my questions briefly. Um, my first question is, um, I love the club's commitment to reducing the harm of gambling. I do note Crown Resorts is a major sponsor of yours, um, and that deal was resigned in twenty twenty. Um, how long is that ongoing for?
They'll be leaving us at the end of twenty three.
Okay. Um, in terms of, um, within the club, was there consideration of naming the club after a First Nations player or, or a former member in the club, or did we just go down the negotiations around which corporate sponsor?
Um, there were always considerations around the naming after First Nations or an ex legend or player. Um, and we are doing that within the facility, within some of the, um, the spaces that the, the team and the admin office will operate.
Um, my next question is, um, I, I've seen estimates that the club's revenue is around thirty million dollars a year. I'm, I note this centre is primarily funded by public money, I know. I'm, I note this centre is primarily funded by public money. I notice the club has a, has a small contribution, but certainly compared to the state and council contribution. It is modest. Um, in that um, situation, um, do you accept that there's a potential that? The club is receiving enough um, there and should be considering probably the public benefit, um, rather than. You know, I, I get not selling the naming rights to your team, like, that's great, um, but selling naming rights to a centre that was primarily funded by state and council. Um, there was an opportunity, I don't, don't think it was envisaged that it would be a corporate name.
Well, I think that the Rabidoo's along with Randwick City Council were equally important in securing the state and federal government support for the centre. So I think. Um, is this, that portion of the centre being built or constructed without our, our presence there, I'm, I'm not, not quite sure. So. I mean, we've always had commercial partnerships in place and, um, you'll see. Across the, the entire sporting landscape, that these types of facilities, you know, in AFL in Melbourne and just recently with the Tigers with. With Zurich, uh, are doing similar things.
Yeah, okay. Um, just finally.
So, it's, uh. I'll, I'll hear the point of order.
Yes. Okay, the point of order is that when a councillor is addressing the speaker, they ask one question. And then the pro- the formal process is to request through to the mayor that they can ask a follow-up question. And what councillor Chapel is doing is she's just running through her questions. Councillor Nielsen knew the process and she asked, could I ask another question? Could I ask another question each time?
Thank you. I, I will uphold the point of order. Um, what I would also say to all councillors is that in their questions, um. I, I, I would caution that the purpose of the question is to provide information in, in terms of consideration and not to substantively debate the matter. Um, I would put that to, to, to the entire horseshoe. Councillor Chapel, please continue.
All right, I just had one final question, which is, I think, just about the company involved. I have also done a little bit of research. Um, I know they've been sued by their own shareholders. There's been a number of US securities, um, commission investigations into their organisation. There's a recent investigation in China. Where they had to change a bunch of their operations there because they were found to be exploitative. Um, has the club sought legal advice on the risk that is posed? By associating with that organisation? And if something happens, do we have an opportunity to rename if that company falls into disrepute?
Uh, we don't have any legal advice, but we always have within our contracts the ability to terminate on both sides.
Thank you. I have a question for councillor De Souza. Uh, wait, wait, so we're not debating it, we just have the speaker?
Thank you, Adam. Thank you very much for being here. Adam, these high-performance centres seem to be coming up all over Sydney. I believe I've seen Penrith and all these areas. Am I right or am I wrong?
That's right, I think Parramatta, West Tigers, Bulldogs, yep.
So, so, okay, so we've opened one door now. So are any of these other clubs putting forward? A similar proposal to yours?
Uh, yes, um, and I think most will be, uh, as I said before, the West Tigers have just. Recently announced, two weeks ago, that they've named the centre after Zurich, so, um, and if, I think.
So it's going to be called the Zurich High Performance Centre?
The Zurich Centre.
The Zurich Centre?
Yep.
Okay, thank you. That's, that's all I wanted to know because Bob Heffron was a great Labour premier and the suburb is named after him. I'll leave it at that, I'll leave it at that.
Yeah, I, I, there's a question from councillor Olive. A question.
A question, yes. Um, so it's, I apologise for being late, I had an issue to deal with. Um, uh, yes, you know, sort of. Uh, I see the, the, um, the, the leases for four, or the naming rights for four years. Does that leave potential that, you know, if there are higher bidders, that there'll be different names every four years and that, I mean. This could go be, name something else in four years' time? And do you think that could be confusing for the public?
Um, look, the, the option is in the brand's favour, um, you know, notwithstanding the opportunity to exit. The partnership if, um, something falls into, um, disrepute. Um, look, our, as I said before, I think it might have been. Prior to your arriving, this is the longest potential partnership in an initial contract form. In Rabidoo's history, which, which means that we feel pretty confident that the, the naming of the centre won't be mixed and matched. I think that was one of the directives from. Blake, our CEO and the board, was that we'd be seeking at least a, you know, an eight-to-ten-year contract inclusive of the initial and extended term.
Thank you. Councillor Payne, defend.
I just wanted to, hi, thanks for coming in. I just wanted to follow up from councillor Chapel's, um, point. Considering, you know, from a Google search, you are able to. To find, you know, relevant issues around this company, um, why wouldn't you seek legal advice? Um, on such a, such a company and such a, an arrangement and such a kind of prominent, um, you know. Signage that is going to be associated with the council.
Yeah, we, we, we did our due diligence on the, um, the business and their a- ability to meet their debts when they fall due. Um, there are always, I mean, as councillor mentioned before, there's, um. Crown, Crown Resorts and other brands have, um, been in the media for different things, just like the Rabidoo's have. Um, you know, we've not been. Um, you know, immune to negative media coverage in the past and I think it's a, a collective effort and it's about tackling the issues. If and when they happen, um, and, you know, we're of the opinion and, and hope that they won't.
Thank you. There being no further questions? Thank you, thank you. Or comments. Um, having now concluded the public section, what we will do is run through the agenda items in order that they appear. Um, in the, uh, council paper. Um, councillors, before we begin, I'd just like to remind everyone to. Please, if possible, keep your remarks as concise as possible so that, um, our families can join us, uh, for dinner, um, afterwards. Um, beginning with MM fifty-one slash twenty-two, financial assistance and donations. Um, I take the mayoral minute as being read and committed to the council. There being no further speakers, I'll put it, all those in favour. All those against, declare that carried. MM fifty-two slash twenty-two, Australia and Argentina, live screening at Maruba Beach. Um, I take the mayoral minute as being read and committed to the council. Councillor Rosenfield.
Yes, I just would, I'd like to, uh, uh, praise, praise yourself, Mr Mayor, in, uh, putting. Uh, organising this event to go on. Uh, it's no secret I'm a football lover, as in the round ball game. Um, the fact that we got two thousand people there to, to watch, um, Australia's finest moment in sixteen years. Uh, and to see people engaged, uh, uh, in the game, uh, was, was, was a great promotion. In addition, I, I got there early to grab a coffee at one of the cafes at McKean Street and they were, they were doing very, very well out of it. And, um, and it was, it was great for business as well, so, um, yeah, v- very happy to see that, this, this event go on. Um, and, um, um, I'm sure we'll talk a bit later on today about having more of them.
Thank you, councillor Luxford. Before you begin, um, councillor Hay, could you please turn off your microphone? Thank you, councillor Luxford.
Mr Mayor, I too, I commend you for listening and responding to my request. It was me. Yeah, um, it was a great success, as I knew it would be. Um, next time we just need a slightly bigger space. Um, but I did tell you that we would probably need a bigger space. That bit you didn't listen to. But I do commend. Um, I commend the council officers that, that worked extremely hard and very quickly to. At such short notice to put on what was probably one of our best events, um, ever. That, uh, you know, supporting, supporting the, the round ball game, the great game, the world game. Bringing the community together, um, the way that it did, there was, we actually had someone in tears. Come up to us, I think the mayor was there at the time, uh, just overwhelmed by, by just how wonderful. An event Randwick Council had put on for the community. The community was down there. Everyone was, um, well, unhappy that we lost, but it was, it was a wonderful sense of community. Um, living up to our Randwick Council values on that spectacular Sunday morning. At the beach, so, um, my congratulations to all that were involved in getting this event off the ground.
Thank you very much. Um, I have a hand up from councillor Sid.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I was actually about to say exactly what councillor likes for the Sid that. Uh, no, yeah. Actually, I think I did su- I think I did suggest that, remember I was talking about the female, uh, World Cup? That we should be putting a lot of money into the World Cup, so a lot of fixing our parks and you've always agreed with councillor Luxford. Um, I just wanted to re- reiterate that what, uh, councillor Luxford said, that this virtually came with virtually. A one-day, two-day turnaround, so all kudos to the events team, also to the outdoor staff. Everyone was very friendly on the night, uh, on the day, sorry. And as, as, uh, councillor Luxford said, the people really enjoyed it. I think. Goes to prove, as we always say, that, uh, we should be doing a lot more with our, uh, I'll say soccer field, instead of football field, sorry councillor Rosenfield. But, as I said, uh, the World Cup, female World Cup's coming and we should be fixing up our grounds and putting a lot more money into it. We've seen the amount of people that follow it and the people that get enjoyment out of it, so thank you very much, man.
Thank you, um, councillor De Souza.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I too. I would like to compliment our events team for what they've done. We've all have ideas, they took it and built on it. We boast about a sense of community in Randwick City. Well, that's exactly what they do with events such as this. The Carols is back, the Sparkles is back. But what I want to say and what I want to compliment is the events team, who had a very short notice. Took a microcosm of an idea and built on it and did what we do so well when it comes to events. Helped to strengthen the co- sense of community that we so dearly are proud of in Randwick City. And thank you, Mr Mayor, too, because at the end of the day, you need leaders and without your leadership, this may not have gone forward. Congratulations.
Thank you, councillor De Souza. Councillor Burst? No? Okay. Cap, no, that's fine. Councillor Chapel, thank you.
I mean, we're quite similar. Um, I just wanted to say thank you, um, particularly to Katie and the team, because I know they slugged their guts out to get this done. Um, and it was a fantastic day. My, um, my daughters were in fact so overwhelmed by the cheering at the end of the game that they needed to leave the site. And we're happy to go to Nippers for once, so that was an exciting turnaround for us. Um, and I also want to commend the mayor for taking the action and improving this. And I know that that was, um, a big push to get it done, so we're super appreciative, um, and I'm super excited about the Matildas.
Thank you very much, councillor Chapel. There being no further speakers. Um, just to close the debate, I will share with the council chamber and the manager of events and place making. Probably won't like me sharing this. Um, when first raised with her, uh, the conversation which I had says, here is an idea. Um, and then following that, there was what can only be described as a, a large audible gasp, um, a pause. A reflection and then a yes, Mr Mayor. And I think that that really demonstrates the attitude, um, a- across. Uh, the events team, but not only that, which permeates, uh, the staff at Randwick Council and I, I would like to commend that and to turn. Um, around an event under what were exceptional circumstances, um, and to get such excellent feedback really is a testament to their hard work. So with that, I commend. The mayoral minute. Thank you. All those in favour? All those against, declare that carried. Thank you. Um, I will now move to the. Uh, supplementary business paper, uh, beginning with MM fifty-three slash twenty-two, Maruba Pro Surfing Event twenty twenty-three. Um, I take that as being read. Uh, it just totals the, uh, fee waivers for the Maruba Pro Surfing Event on the third and fifth of March twenty twenty-three. Um, the reason it is coming to the December meeting is just due to the proximity, um, of the February, uh, twenty twenty-three, um. The twenty twenty-three council meeting, uh, in order to give them time to plan and accommodate the budget. So. I commend the mayoral minutes to the floor. Are there any speakers? There being no speakers, I will now put it. All those in favour? All those against, declare that carried. Thank you. Uh, MM fifty-four slash twenty-two. Um, I'm apologising for the pronunciation now, I just know her as Natalia. Um, but what I would like to do is, um, congratulate, uh, Natalia Mendelvich, um, on what was. Um, quite a very impressive, uh, personal achievement, um, uh, and, and not only that, an achievement. Uh, for Randwick Council to have, um, a, and a staff member of ours to take out the Louise Petrel Individual Sustainability Award. At the local government in New South Wales. Uh, Excellence in Environment Awards is, um, quite a considerable, uh, achievement. I think it really demonstrates the passion, uh, and the determination that she has, uh, as a Randwick Council employee. Uh, which has, uh, given back to Randwick Council over many, many years. Uh, my personal experience is that passion is. Uh, so strongly felt that I have at times been unable to attend her events and then changed. Uh, my mind, uh, at the last minute, uh, for fear of the outcome of not doing that. But I think that that is. Uh, really quite a clear demonstration as to how passionate she is, um, in sustainability and, and. Um, from the almost covert means which, uh, uh, our manager of sustainability, Peter Maginov, went to. Um, to keep, uh, this individual achievement under wraps, uh, and as a surprise to Natalia, um, it really shows how excited, uh, he was about it. Um, I also note that the deputy mayor, uh, Pandefany, was present, uh, at the awards and there was a very proud, uh, family and, and her colleagues were also very complimentary. Uh, and excited by the award, uh, as well. So I commend the mayoral minute and congratulate Natalia on this significant personal achievement. There being no further speakers, I commend the mayoral minute to the floor. All those in favour? All those against, declare that carried. Thank you. Uh, now, what we will do is we will go to urgent business. Do we have any urgent business? Councillor Luxford, could you please, uh, read what it is that you're seeking to have. Uh, moved as urgent business and briefly explain why it is urgent?
So, um, it's a matter of urgency, Mr, Mr Mayor, I have a motion. That I'm see, um, putting to council tonight, um. Regarding developments that are on our back doorstep. So, the motion is that council seek legal advice. From senior council with a view to taking urgent action to restrain the city of Sydney. And or the New South Wales Government from making any further determinations on the draft planning proposal. For the site formerly known as Sutton's, uh, Rosebury, which is at one hundred and eighteen to one hundred and thirty Ipsum Road. And nine hundred and five South Dowling Street, Zetland. Uh, and if determination has been made. Have it set aside until a complete and thorough traffic study has been done to include the Randwick LGA. Mr Mayor, this.
Ca- ca- councillor Luxford, could you just confirm the urgency of it? Just explain.
Um, so the urgency is that the, um, city of Sydney. Uh, pa- panel last, oh, full council meeting has determined to send this off to Gateway. And there are serious flaws with this, um, with this development and with it going to Gateway. There's been no consultation and we need to stop this happening so that we can achieve some consultation. Or, you know, something for the residents.
Is it time-sensitive?
It is very time-sensitive.
Thank you very much. Um, councillor Veach is the second, but I need the mover of the procedural motion speaks. No, no, it's moved councillor Luxford. Councillor Veach is the second with a procedural motion to declare it urgent. Can I please have, um, uh. I, I need to now call for a vote as to the urgency, so all those in favour? All those against, declare that carried. Thank you. I too, I agree as the chair, uh, that it is urgent. Uh, councillor Luxford is the mover of the motion, seconded by councillor Veach.
So, um. This development sits on the boundary of West Kensington and it's on a four-point-four-five hectare site. Um, which is amongst, and it's amongst the bis- biggest urban renewal in Australia's history with the worst planning. City of Sydney has already smashed its housing targets and at our expense. And this further development only falls into the category of developer greed. We are now becoming the collateral damage for this developer's greed. Um, there is little, very little green space in this development. There are almost one thousand dwellings. That are going to be put there. Um, the green space that they have are pocket parks, which are generally in the shade. And very tiny, they're just like waste areas where they, they can't do much with. Uh, there's been no cons- consultation with our council or our residents. Who will have this development in their backyard. The skyline has been altered forever. Um, with twenty-four, twenty-nine storey towers being built on. The skyline has been altered forever, um, with twenty-four, twenty-nine storey towers being built on Link Road. Link Road is the entry and exit to the eastern distributor, so this is going to cause major issues there. Um, let me see. So the main point is really that there has not been a traffic study done that includes our L G A. So this development is not only going to affect the residents of West Kensington, it's going to affe- affect the whole of our Randwick L G A. Because the traffic moves through there west to east and it's at gridlock at the best of times without us having to add more. There is no public transport, very little, it's already at capacity. So we're seeking to be put at the table, we need to have our voice out there for our residents. Um, you know, because the infrastructure just isn't there on the other side of Lenthall Street. There is nothing. They have a new pool which fills quite quickly and that's about it. So all these people will be te- coming along Centennial Park, the beaches and all at our expense. So we need to be at the discussion table, our residents' voices need to be heard, their concerns need to be heard. We should not be treated with disdain by Mayor Clovermore and the City of Sydney councillors who don't give a fig for their residents and for ours. Um, I'm sure Philippa will, will explain more about that one. Um, I would like to thank the three City of Sydney councillors who supported us last night. Linda Scott, Deputy Mayor Sylvie Elsmore and Yvonne Weldon. They were the only ones that stood up for us and for their own residents as well. So, um, commend this motion and hope that you'll support all of us because this is affecting the whole of the L G A, not just the West Ward residents.
Thank you councillor Luxford, councillor Veitch is the seconder of the motion.
Uh, thank you, Mr Mayor, and thank you councillor Luxford. Look, I fully uh support uh this uh urgency motion from councillor Luxford and I hope council will also. I think it's really important, important to, and councillors would not be aware of the absolute lack of consultation with Randwick uh council councillors, uh, planning staff and residents about this proposal. So this is an amendment that's going through to the uh specific, it's a planning proposal to amend the twenty twelve L E P and D C P. Um, councillor Luxford and I attended a residents' meeting uh on Thursday. We were alerted uh by some very on the case residents uh who'd been keeping an eye on what was happening there after they saw about the uh, the Sutton site being sold earlier this year. Um, at that stage, there was an expectation that uh City of Sydney planning staff would attend this meeting to actually listen to the residents and, and go back and also listen to the residents' concerns and maybe also provide some information as a sort of a site visit to West Kensington. This meeting occurred in Virginia Street. Um, once they heard residents and councillors were showing up, they decided not to come. Um, I rearranged my evening and attended the pla- central planning committee uh that night. Again, it was very hard for anyone to attend because it was such short notice. Um, I put the view which was essentially to defer the matter, uh, because council laws had not been informed. Uh, I was questioned why council, uh, Randwick council staff had not, were not there to attend? And because I'd spoken to our planning officers, been told that they had not been informed about it. You know, just the, the arrogance of this. I was then provided with a lecture, I won't even tell you how that went down, uh, but everything was just dismissed. That was our last opportunity and residents had actually attended another meeting, another committee meeting on the Monday. So residents attended, they'd been sort of given the flick. Uh, I attended as a ward councillor, you know, there'd been invitations to, to come along which they refused. And actually, at City of Sydney council, residents or any speakers are not permitted under their code of meeting practice to speak in an actual coun- ordinary council meeting. Um, so that was that. So the urgency of this matter lies in the fact that we have actually gone out of our way to make representations, uh, to ask for something which is inc- completely reasonable, which is a deferral of this matter for further consultation before this draft goes to Gateway. We are about to go, the government's about to go into caretaker mode before an election. They should not be making a decision on this uh massive development. It will be the size of a small suburb, it's going to have impacts on traffic, everything all around the area from, from miles around, not just in City of Sydney. And so now councillor Luxford has brought this very, very commendable motion to council because this is our last resort. We have actually tried legitimate avenues, uh, and to have not, we haven't even been met halfway. Uh, we would like to have just done it in a reasonable way, uh, and that has just been ignored and dismissed. Uh, I was very disappointed at the way uh I was treated actually at that, that meeting. Um, because I had consulted with the ward councillors, I consulted with residents, I wasn't just going as an individual councillor. Uh, and that was disappointing, to be honest. Uh, so, um, I urge councillors to support this motion.
Thank you, there's a hand up from councillor Hayne and councillor Rosenfield.
Um, we, we, when we all are running for office, I'm pretty sure every single one of us ran on a platform of uh stopping overdevelopment now. We all think of overdevelopment as being something that ruins our street, streets, area now. I advise you all to think of Lenthall Street Kensington, it is a one lane each way road. This is going to put a thousand units right on Lenthall, right on the extension of Le- Lenthall Street. Um, there's a disturbing trend for, think of uh Pagewood Green, uh, all the central ward uh councillors. You've got um over a thousand uh units being built, um, right on the, to, well, well over, possibly even three thousand, being built right on the border. Now, we've all done what we can to stop overdevelopment within Randwick Council, uh, but we need to do fights, uh, fight where we can to make sure it doesn't happen right on our border and that it doesn't uh destroy the amenity of the, uh, the residents of Randwick Council. I'm, I support my fellow ward councillors and I urge everyone to support this urgent business.
Councillor Rosen.
Yeah, I support what everyone said so far and also add something that, I, I find it disturbing that all the, all the car yards we seem to have in the eastern suburbs seem to be closing down and disappearing. So I'm, I'm wondering where we're going to go, buy cars in the future, I guess. Um, um, yeah, because thi- thi- this Ro- Rosebury was a fantastic, uh, like quite a few different dealerships. I mean, personally, I, I bought a few cars there, uh, and, and, uh, but I know a lot of other residents have, have as well. And, uh, but a, a question to the mover, so uh, did you say that they sold, Sutton's has sold the whole site? The whole, the site, okay, okay.
Sutton's, Sutton's is gone.
It's gone, yeah.
In excess of three hundred million dollars, probably closer to eight.
Okay, okay. Yeah, so, um, yeah, I fu- fully support, obviously the car's gone already, but if we can have something, a little, a little uh lower scale than what uh City of Sydney are, are looking at, then, yeah, I support it.
Thank you, before I go to the next speaker, just council as a reminder on time, councillor Sead.
Just a very quick one, Mr Mayor, as councillor Luxford said, the, the reason why this encompasses the whole area, um, the whole L G A is it, um, obviously detriment to, it is the, I think it's the largest building, uh, largest in a in the whole, in southern hemisphere. Um, but at the same time, um, I'm speaking on behalf of the Southwood here. Now, our bus, the three nine two, got redirected from town and goes straight through to Zetland. We can't come back because everyone's getting on to get off at Zetland. And so the more people, there's not, what my point is, there's absolutely no infrastructure to justify this being built. The station is too small, the station was never built for this many people at uh Green Square. And the only buses that goes through it is our bus that, and we count everyone that's from Pagewood Green. Again, we tried to fight that and unfortunately we got nowhere, but it seems to be the neighbouring councils are really doing a detriment to us. But as I said, it's a very serious matter that we only have one bus to get into the city and it only goes to central, uh, sent, to Redfern, sorry, doesn't go to central. So we have to go through Zetland, we've got to go through Pagewood Green. So the numbers that are growing on the other side of the border, and as we always say, Pagewood Green, they use our side, they use Sefron Park and all our facilities. And the same will happen at Zetland, they'll come across in the, uh, uh, finding shortcuts down to Allison Road, et cetera, onto Anzac Parade via uh Rosebury, which they already do now, most people do, and they'll come down Doncaster Avenue and all that sort of stuff. So this will be a detriment to our L G A if it goes ahead.
Councillor Burst.
Thank you, um, recently I spoke with, um, the member for Heffernan, on several occasions, we spoke about this uh development. And, um, I think it's time that we sometimes take a deep breath and maybe pause, um, and, and sort of have a real look at what's right and wrong in an area. Um, if you look at that Zetland area, there's been a few missteps in the way City of Sydney has managed developments there. The pool being a classy example, in that there's only a handful of parking spots. They're expecting everybody to basically get there on their bike or to park in neighbouring areas. Um, and as we can see, when you've got small kids, that's not possible. Um, so it's, so what happens is you've got people that are parking in the neighbouring streets just to try and get to the swimming pool. Now, this development will make it even worse. Um, so I think we need to support councillor Luxford on this uh motion and, um, let's make sure that we put a pause on this, thank you.
Thank you, councillor Luxford in reply. Thank you, I'll now put it, all those in favour? Sure, there will be a show of hands, okay, all those in favour? All those against? Declare that unanimous, thank you. Uh, the next item which we have uh is G M thirty-one slash twenty, uh, two. Um, there's no, it's, it's a request for urgent business, um, by virtue of a late staff report. Um, do I have a mover? Uh, okay, just for it to be considered as urgent business, so moved councillor Sead, thank you. And the reason for it being moved as urgent business?
Um, watch us going to move it because I thought it was a good idea, but I think there is a, an urgency that they need to get, uh, this needs to go through so that the club can actually get their financial donation from Dulux, so it needs to go through by the summer. So it needs to be done as quick as possible.
Thank you councillor Sead, I too, as the chair, consider it as urgent business. Um, I will now call for a vote on the urgency, all those in favour? All those against, declare that carried, thank you very much. Uh, the motion is moved, councillor Sead, uh, seconded by councillor Hamilton, councillor Sead as the mover.
Uh, just very quickly, I just see this as a good idea that two, one, we're having, I know it's not a full-on art installation, but we were, it's very colourful. It actually highlights lifesavers, it gets the club a two and a half thousand dollar donation. Um, there's no harm in it, we are trying to beautify some of our buildings through public artworks and I think this is one way of doing it. And we don't have to pay for it, which makes it even better, and it, there's a financial but, uh, gain involved, so thank you very much, Mr Mayor.
Uh, thank you, um, councillor Hamilton is the seconder.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I think that, um, we should also look at the fact that this is the tenth anniversary that Dulux has had a partnership with Surf Life Saving. And I think it's fantastic that they've chosen Clavelli to, um, highlight that relationship. And I too agree that it's quite colourful, it'll bring a lot of people down to the beach to, um, to view and of course, that's what we want. Um, so, yeah, I think it's great and good on the club for, for, um, you know, talking to Dulux and making this happen.
Councillor Nielsen.
Well, much as I love the club and much as I love the work that lifesavers do, I have to say that I'm horrified with this particular proposal. And I'm going to move that we, uh, refuse the permission for this. Um, and I think that, um, there are a number of reasons why I think we should be refusing permission. First of all, you look at the, um, illustration there and you can see how, um, much Dulux is, um, acknowledged in this, um, beautification. I think the other thing is that when we think about public art and we think, well, this is public art and I wouldn't call it great art. Um, but we're down here at the foreshore, I do not think that this is respectful of the foreshore. I think we've got a jewel in the crown down there for us, for all our community. Um, if we're going to have a mural down there, I think it needs to be a far more attractive, sensitive mural. This is not attractive, it's not sensitive, it's, it's gross. I mean, even if you look at the fact that they're trying to, I suppose it might be worse because they're trying to use artistic licence, but the head's chopped off of the lifesaver if you look at the, the illustration there. But whatever you want to say in terms of the artistic work with this, it's not really suitable for this particular location. If the club needs the money, I would be more, I would be happy to add a second part in the refusal that we donate some money towards them because they do do such a wonderful job. But I do not think we should be approving a mural like this in a public location, so important to us, namely the foreshore. It's just totally not appropriate to the natural environment, so it's not, if you look at our public art policy under the principles of public artwork should relate well to the built-in natural environment. This does not relate well to the public, or the built and natural environment. And also too, it does not exemplify artistic exa- excellence and integrity. Um, so definitely I think that we should, uh, refuse this one. Yes, a good idea, I've been, uh, just had words of wisdom, um, put in my ear, Mr Mayor, um, from a fellow councillor. Um, why don't we suggest a different artwork? Um, that we could approve an artwork, but the artwork should be more sensitive to the environment and perhaps, um, more groper, I mean, the groper's there, but you can barely see the poor creature. Um, so something that's not so much in your face, um, and something that would fit with our artistic, um, policy.
Thank you, I have a hand up from councillor Panda Feeny.
Um, while I am, of course, very, um, you know, supportive of any kind of artistic endeavour, I guess I would, you know, on, on looking at it more closely, uh, you know, you can barely see it because it's the pic, you know, the, like, so we can't really see and I, you know, I will take this point from another councillor is like, it, to me, it seems like all men on the side there. Um, I guess my first impression from attending, um, the lunch there, which has been wonderful and inclusive, that there isn't a, a huge female representation in that club. I, I don't understand that it, I don't actually think that it would bring people down to the club. And again, for a two thousand five hundred dollar donation, which we could provide very, very easily and quickly, it's like a mayoral minute kind of amount. Um, we, we could actually go through a process to get a, a more kind of sensitive and artistic, um, design, thanks.
Thank you, there is a hand. Uh, I, I'm, I'll go to councillor Dusser, then I'll go to councillor Veitch, Dusser, councillor Dusser.
Mr Mayor, two and a half thousand dollars may not be a lot to the councillors who have spoken. But to someone who's homeless or someone who's vulnerable or someone needs, it's a lot of money. So let's be realistic when it comes to money. If we have a generous donor who wishes to contribute and help the club and indirectly help community, we should be all supportive of it. Now, we heard a speaker before talk about sponsorship. This company has not asked for its name to be put up in lights. Is there a point of order?
Is it a point of order to tell the councillor that the, um, the name of the sponsor is actually on the?
Love, love, ca- councillor Dusser, please continue.
Thank you.
Please continue.
The point I'm making is, this will beautify that club. This is what the club wants, this is a group of volunteers. It's all right to sit in our ivory towers and say, oh, we can do better, or it should be green, or it should be this. This is what the people want. And this is beautiful. At the end of the day, art, beauty, it's in, in the eye of the beholder. They've obviously researched it, they've talked about it, but if I was driving towards this edifice and from the car park saw this, I would know what this is all about. This is a lifesaving club and it, it, it's purpose-built to do, save lives. It's all right, we could build or paint any mural on it, but wouldn't it be more, be more meaningful if we accepted what the members wanted and what the community, if it's consulted on this, want? But anyway, I don't think there's anything wrong in what they're doing. If it, we can save two and a half thousand dollars and it's for the good of the community and the good of the club, I think we should move forward.
Thank you very much, um, I actually had a question from councillor Veitch and then I'll go to councillor Chapel. Okay, you, you're up councillor Veach, please continue.
Thank you. Look, I was ready to vote for this. I, I have to confess, I didn't see the report come in, so just reading it as we sit here. But I don't know that the club is really getting great value for money for having a mural over the entire side of a building for like five months or so for two and a half thousand dollars. I just find that extraordinary. That's not sponsorship. Like, that's just, they're actually giving something to Dulux, not the other way around. This should be like, as councillor Nielsen mentioned, we could easily make a donation of two and a half thousand dollars. This, this is not right. I mean, there has to be some calculation of, of the benefit to the club for this. And it, it's a massive piece of advertising for, for, for like a, a pittance in remuneration. I just don't see that this adds up. I'm also, I'm not against a mural per se, like a better one, but there's just, this doesn't make sense. Why, why are we getting this today? Why is this urgent business? You know, it's just very odd, in my opinion. I think we also have to really question whether it's appropriate to paint a big mural there. Perhaps it does need repainting, but like, how are they gonna stop the paint, you know, any paint runoff from going into the bay? I think that's actually a bit of a concern. So I don't think I can vote for this.
Thank you to councillor Chapel.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Just very briefly, I mean, I, I think we should be clear that this isn't a community service they're providing here. It's, it's advertising and that's okay, but like, let's not pretend it's a community service. My main concern about this, and it was, it's kind of hard to see on the, the size of the paper that it came in, is I don't think this, it, like, it's clearly been designed for Clovelly because the groper is on there, but it clearly doesn't look like it's actually been designed for this building. Because you wouldn't ordinarily do a painting where you cut the heads off your subjects. And we don't cut the heads off the Dulux dog, but we do cut the heads off two lifesavers, which I think is probably actually a bit disrespectful. And I think my other comment is, I mean, that, that building is clearly, like, it's not the world's most beautifully coloured building, but it's designed to be kind of low visual impact. And I think if we're gonna put something on it, I would have anticipated we would get a few options and could choose something that reflects kind of where the community wishes are. And I just don't think this is quite it. So, which I think is a bit disappointing.
Thank you. Councillor Burst.
Sometimes I think we just need to respect the views of the community. And this is what the community and Coogee and Clovelly Surf Club are asking for. I don't think it's up for elitists in our community to decide that. In our community to decide that. I think that's for, for, for the people of Clovelly to decide that. Artwork is in the eye of the beholder. Sometimes we want abstract art, sometimes we want picturesque art. Sometimes we want visuals and stills. But at the end of the day, it's, it's, the beauty's in the eye of the beholder when it comes to paintings like this. And let's not forget that at the end of this process of next year, it will be painted back. And it'll be painted back and it'll look bigger, better and brighter than ever. So I think it's a fantastic balance. And life is about balance. So this gives us balance. Thank you.
Thank you councillors. Before we continue, I'd just like to remind everyone that all speakers will be heard in silence. Thank you. Okay, there's been a request for it to be put. Thanks, all those in favour, all those against? Declare that carried. Okay, thank you. Councillor Sedd to close the debate.
Mr Mayor, I think we really are creating a mountain out of a molehill. This, to answer the questions, and I'm used to working signage, I can guarantee you that with those windows and the heads cut off, they'll just do that sort of stuff that they put on the windows of the buses so that it all evens out. I mean, it is a lifesaving facility, so I can understand why you'd put lifesavers on the wall. It is colourful, it's only there for four months. Then they will repaint the building, so we're actually getting our asset fixed for free in Dulux's good paint. So I honestly don't, and I might remind, and some of the new councillors probably won't know this, but we had virtually exactly the same argument when we did the rainbow flag down at Coogee, and look how well that went off. So there is, it is subjective. And I'm quite proud of putting the rainbow flag down at Coogee, so, and I went through the same arguments from some councillors for that. So it is subjective, it's only there for four months, they're repainting the building, it helps the surf club, it brightens up the place. It's all concrete, it's probably a concrete mess anyway. So I just would, do you not understand why you have to make it so, such a difficult? Exactly. Thank you.
I, I have one question, which I think is an important one as well. It's all been done in a hurry. What happens if there is any problem with the paint and spillage and clean-up? Who's responsible for that?
I will, it is a question. I, I will refer.
The debate was closed.
I'm gonna allow it. I will throw to the relevant officer, and then we will, I won't allow any follow-ups though. I will put to the relevant officer for response. Thank you, Mr Kurayaku.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Council will work with the surf club, ensuring there's adequate safeguards in place for the, for the work to be undertaken.
Thank you. I will now put it. All those in favour? Okay, there has been a request for a division. Thank you. No, no, I'm just letting, okay, all those in favour, please raise your hand. Thank you. We have councillor Hamilton, councillor Hay, councillor Luxford, councillor Rosenfeld, councillor McCafferty, councillor Wilson, councillor Sedd, councillor Burst, councillor D'Souza and the mayor. All those against? We have councillor Pandefini, councillor Nielsen, councillor Veach, councillor Chapel, councillor Olive. I declare the motion carried. Thank you. We now return. Thank you. We now move to Director of City Planning Reports. CP seventy-six, oh sorry, we're going through in Seri Adam. Please call out as I'm looking down. CP seventy-six slash twenty-two Disability Inclusion Action Plan, challenged by councillor Veach. Okay, CP seventy-seven is a planning proposal, so will need to be challenged, challenged by councillor Nielsen. CP seventy-eight, new local heritage items, challenged councillor Olive. I saw that. CP seventy-nine, public notification of the VPA thirty-one forty-one Anzac Parade. Yeah, it does, but I just, it's good to have somebody challenged. Yep, challenged councillor Veach. Okay, thank you. CP eighty slash twenty-two, not public notice of the VPA. Sorry, who was that challenged by? Challenged by councillor Luxford. Okay, CP eighty-one slash twenty-two, challenged by councillor Nielsen. CS sixty-six twenty-two, challenged by councillor Rosenfeld. CS sixty-seven twenty-two, challenged by councillor Sedd. Nobody wants to eat tonight. CP, CO sixty-three slash twenty-two, Randwick City Council Family Day. Unchallenged, thank you very much. CO sixty-four, uh, twenty-two, challenged by councillor Olive. NM eleven, oh okay, and these are the notes of motion. Can I please have a mover of the unchallenged item? Challenge, moved by councillor Hamilton, seconded by councillor Chapel. All those in favour? All those against? I declare that carried. CP seventy-six slash twenty-two, challenged by councillor Veach. Could you please outline to the meeting what? Thank you, what it is that you're moving, seconded by councillor Nielsen.
Uh, thank you. I'm moving it with a fairly substantive amendment. The amendment is not to change anything that's on there, it's simply some extra points. Sorry, I'm just trying to find the right page. So yeah, I've, I've added a number of different points. It's, it's a very good, I commend the, the staff and the officers for their work on this. And there's been a lot of community consultation. It was, you know, really helpful to read through the different submissions. But one thing that becomes very clear when you look at our resourcing strategy on, on page thirteen is that any works are just sitting within our current budget, and in terms of capital works. And any kind of operational initiatives are simply being, having to be covered by our existing staff resources and allocations. And we know that our community development team is absolutely fantastic. They have been doing fantastic work, but with very, very limited resources. And I do wonder if that has had a little bit of an influence on the way this report has been, well, in effect, put together. Because if you can, everything in there is highly commendable, there's no issue with it. But unlike some of our other plans and strategies, it is very, I guess, vague on, on targets, on audits and the types of things that I've seen when I compared it with other disability inclusion action plans. And so I think first up, we actually need to have a look at what we can do to increase the resources in this business unit. And that is the first point. Following on from that, I think one of the, the main things that needs to be done, and this again is from consulting with some quite senior disability, not just activists, but people who are very involved on state government committees and so on, who have a disability themselves. And through reviewing some other plans, is that really one of the first things that needs to happen is an audit of our current council facilities. Such as, you know, just our council buildings, our playgrounds, our footpaths and so on. This is really the first step that happens. From then on, we actually need to find out what those recommendations are going to be. And then find out how much it's gonna cost and actually, as a council, make a decision on how we're gonna pay for it. Because while all of the points in the plan are highly commendable, they're, they're all, when you look at the sort of timeframe, it's all ongoing or annual, annual or ongoing. There's, there's very few targets, set timeframes, specific outcomes. And when you read those responses from the residents who wrote in, some of them just struggle so much. And I have to say, as a councillor, and I'm sure we've all seen this, when we go on pre-poll or polling day and you stand there for those hours on end at a polling booth, and you see these frail people, elderly people, people with a disability that you may not always see, because they can often, it's very difficult to come out and interact, but they will come out to vote. They will come out and vote. And I think every one of us, I hope you don't mind me speaking in that way, has probably seen this. And we've seen people come up and try to get that parking spot outside the, outside the polling booth. And some of our polling day things, venues actually, you know, are not, are completely inaccessible. And we get that feedback, like Kensington Scout Hall, for example, there's no ramp, you know. So these are real issues that people are struggling with. And, you know, we have residents coming up to us asking for water bubblers and outdoor gyms and all sorts of things because they can get out into the community and they get an opportunity to speak to councillors and put forward their view. But we are just not getting so many opportunities for people with a disability to actually come to us and say, this is what we need. And that's why we need an audit, because they just don't have as many opportunities to make representations to council. They would have done it for this, for this consultation, and that's gonna be it for, you know, another four years. So I hope you can consider these amendments. They're very straightforward, there's no budgetary implication probably other than doing the audit. But we could get a report back on that. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other speakers? Councillor Chapel? There are no further speakers. Thank you. Councillor Chapel.
Sorry, thank you, Mr Mayor. I just had a very brief amendment which I've sent through to Julie, which is a little bit along the li, these lines, which is just a kind of, there's under point three, point two, inclusive council employment and procurement, it says, consider setting employment targets and develop strategies, which has kind of moved down the road. I think we're, we're looking to do a workforce census. I think we should then be starting to actually have targets for staff with a disability and be an employer of first choice. That's not in the plan. They're not canvassed in the plan.
Well, hold on, hold on, hold on, hold on. Thank you. Councillor Veach accepts it. Councillor Chapel, you can continue.
I just have one more thing, which is just that, the consultation that was done on this was really spectacular. And this actually comes from that where meaningful employment was a really key thing that a lot of people came back with. I think the accessibility stuff is super important because, you know, we know the cut curb effect where stuff that we do that helps access for people with a disability actually ends up helping people with prams or, you know, people who are limping around that week, little kids, et cetera. So I just, I, yeah, commend that amendment.
Thank you. There was a question. Councillor Sedd.
The question is, I, I'm not trying to go against the amendment, but I just wanna ask the question. I thought we do have a disability inclusion policy in, especially with outdoor staff and within the admin staff. I just wanna ask one of the directors if that's, I'm sure there's one.
Through to, through to the relevant officer.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Yes, we do have provisions in our workforce plan, but there would be no harm in including it in a disability action plan as well.
Thank you. There being no further speakers, councillor Veach, do you wish to close the debate?
No.
Okay, thank you. You'll now put it. All those in favour? All those against? Declare that carried. Thank you very much. CP seventy-seven twenty-two, planning proposal, new local heritage item, councillor Pandefini. I would like you to take the chair, as I will be absenting myself from the chamber.
Yeah, point of order, let's not get a point of order, Kristen. Councillor Nielsen?
I would just like to take the opportunity, councillors, to move this. And good, thankfully seconded by councillor Hamilton. And you can't second it because you're the mayor. So in other words, the North Ward councillors are absolutely unanimously in agreement with this particular proposal. And full marks for the neighbour who got the ball rolling on this particular matter. And also for the excellent heritage advice that we had provided, which has so strongly endorsed this particular recommendation. So I just commit, committed to all of you to support, and I'm sure you will. I don't need to say anything more. Thank you very much.
Councillor Hamilton? Any other speakers? Julie, do you mind adding, councillor? Yeah, great. Any other speakers? Okay, I'll put it. All those in favour? It's a division, yeah. Can we get a division, please? Yeah. Okay, please raise your hands. Councillor Hamilton? Four, so four. Councillor Hamilton, councillor Nielsen, councillor Veach, councillor Hay, councillor Luxford, councillor Chapel, councillor Rosenfeld, councillor Olive, councillor McCafferty, councillor Wilson, councillor Sedd, councillor Burst, councillor D'Souza and councillor Pandefini is also four. Declare that carried. Thanks. Yeah. Can we please add that it was carried unanimously? Thank you.
Could Julie just scroll down for a second? And a bit further down? Oh, sorry, thank you. Councillor Olive's out? Okay, thank you. We now go to CP seventy-eight slash twenty-two, challenged by councillor Olive. Councillor Olive?
Okay, yes, this is proposed, proposed draft planning proposal.
Moved councillor Olive, seconded councillor Wilson. Councillor Olive, please continue.
This proposed draft planning proposal, I'm asking you to endorse this to go for a gateway decision. This is for heritage listing of number one and number three Berwick Street. These are two interwar buildings, and if you combine that with number three, it makes, as councillor Hamilton said previously, a very pretty corner. It's much loved by residents there, as we can see by the submissions that have been put in whenever it's been considered. And this proposal has been endorsed, not only by city plan, heritage assessors, but also by the Rammer Local Planning Panel. And so I just commend you to send this to the Department of Planning and Environment for Gateway Decision.
Councillor Wilson is the seconder. Thank you. Are there any further speakers? There being no further speakers, I'll now put it. As it is a planning matter, we will go straight to a division. Can I call it the division? Okay, all those in favour, please raise your hand. I declare that unanimous. Thank you. Thank you. Okay, CP seventy-nine slash twenty-two, public notification of voluntary planning agreement thirty-one forty-one, Anzac Parade, Kensington, challenged by councillor Veach. Councillor Veach, could you please outline what it is that you are moving?
No, I won't be moving it, I was just.
Thank you. Can I please have a mover? Moved councillor Sedd, seconded councillor Hamilton. Councillor Sedd is the mover? Thank you.
I think this is a great thing for the West Ward, and more money goes into the area.
Thank you. Councillor Hamilton?
I concur, and no further comments.
Thank you. Are there any further speakers? There being no further speakers. Councillor Sedd, I assume you don't wish to close the debate? There are no further speakers. Thanks very much. There are no further speakers, thank you. It being a planning matter, we'll now put it, and we'll go straight to a division. Hold on, I just want to give time to bring it up. Thank you. All those in favour, please raise your hand. Okay, councillor Hamilton, councillor Pandefini, councillor Nielsen, councillor Rosenfeld, councillor Olive, councillor McCafferty, councillor Wilson, councillor Sedd, councillor Burst, councillor De Souza and the mayor. All those against? Councillor Veach, Hay, Lutzford and Chapel. I declare the motion carried. Thank you. Okay, we now move to CP eighty slash twenty-two, public notification of VPA one-three-seven to one-five-one, Anzac Parade, Kensington. Do I have a mover? Moved councillor Burst. Do I have a seconder? Seconded councillor Sedd. Councillor Burst is the mover, could you please outline what it is you're moving?
I'd like to move as per the recommendation.
Thank you. Do you wish to speak?
Reserve the right.
Thank you. Councillor Sevres is the seconder.
Once again, I'd just like to thank the council officers for doing the VPA and another one and a half million dollars towards the West Ward improvements.
Thank you. Are there any further speakers? Are there any further speakers? There being no further speakers, councillor Burst, do you wish to close the debate? Councillor Burst?
Close the debate.
Thank you very much. It being a planning matter, we will now go straight to a vote. Okay, thank you. If we could please bring up the division. All those in favour, please raise your hand. We have councillor Hamilton, councillor Pandefini, councillor Nielsen, councillor Olive, councillor McCafferty, councillor Wilson, councillor Sedd, councillor Burst, councillor De Souza and the mayor. Miss, I declare that carried. Sorry, all those against, all those against, please, thank you. Councillor Veach, councillor Hay, councillor Lutzford, councillor Chapel. I declare that carried. Miss Hartson, could you? Oh, you've got it. The councillor Rosenfeld has left the chamber, thank you. All good? Thank you. We now move to CP eighty-one slash twenty-two, Jolt Public Electric Vehicle Charging, challenged by councillor Nielsen. Councillor Nielsen, could you please outline what it is that you were moving?
Basically, I've sent the proposed amendment to the relevant officer. So basically, as in the business paper, but with an additional point E. The additional point B, E being that the nominated fee be reviewed via council's budget process for the twenty-twenty-three, twenty-four year, and a new or modified fee be considered for adoption to take effect first July twenty-twenty-three. That's just if in fact the fee that we have agreed upon is considered too low, or too high, I suppose, for that matter, but I would imagine more likely if it were too low. It gives us that opportunity for flexibility. So I think someone seconded?
Seconded by councillor Sedd.
Okay. So other than that, as I said, the motion, I'm supporting the recommendation in the business paper, and I think that this is quite a good proposal. I guess what I always am concerned about is advertising and the prominence of advertising and so on. So that is another point that further down the track we'll need to be very mindful of. But I won't say more at this stage, other than to leave it at this.
Councillor Sedd is the seconder, then I'll go to councillor Olive. Okay, thank you. Are you going to force, you're going to propose an amendment? Thank you. Would you like to speak to your amendment?
C D and E, sorry. There, you can see. That council charges an interim fee of a thousand dollars per car space for existing mixed public electric vehicle charging and advertising screen facilities, because that's what they are, they're mixed, they're mixed, they have two functions. One is advertising, and one is electric vehicle charging station. And they, and sort of, in capture, they are consoles which wrap around, wrap around electric substations, so they're on our streets there. And point D is that, you know, if this takes off, then this creates the possibility, the probability, that there will be a lot of visual clutter and intrusion from illuminated advertising screens. And this was pointed out then by councillor Nielsen. And I'm concerned that this could get away from us. And so I think that, you know, sort of, to head this off at the pass, that council should refuse development approval of these mixed public electric vehicle charging and advertising screen facilities on that particular, on that particular basis. And also that there are other providers, you know, sort of in the market as well, such as EV Charge Fox, I've counted, there are a range of others as well. So I commend the amendment.
Thank you. I actually didn't catch the seconder of the amendment. Is there a seconder for the amendment? Seconded councillor Veach, councillor Veach is the seconder? You don't wish to speak? Thank you. Councillor Nielsen, did you accept the amendment? I didn't ask.
No, you didn't ask. So thank you, Mr Mayor. I have no problem with D, council not the potential for visual clutter, because I totally agree with it, as you alluded to councillor Olive. But I think that council, that point E, and your point E, I'll just clarify that, but I think if we accept point E, I don't see how we can accept the Jolt charging facility.
Councillor Nielsen, can I actually throw that question to the general manager?
Well, that's what I would like to do through you, Mr Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Council can really only refuse these development applications, and that has to be through environmental assessment and at the officer level. Councillors can't impose that requirement on staff. There needs to be an assessment of the application by staff and determination by either the panel or a senior officer under delegated authority.
Oh, a question, because I'm sorry, I don't quite understand that, and I apologise for the fact that I didn't quite understand the answer. Because I'm obviously sympathetic with including this, but I'm not quite sure, well, if it's, if it's, if according to the advice given to us, if I'm right in interpreting the advice given by the acting general manager, it's acceptable for us to accept this. Well, are you shaking your head, Mr Mayor? So you're saying it's not? Okay, in your ramble, rant, sorry, in the, you were very polite in your response. Mister acting general manager, you need to be more definite when you're speaking to me, perhaps. So you would say that in fact we cannot accept, your advice is that we cannot accept point E if we're going to go with the Jolt proposal? Is that correct?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. In point E, council, as in the councillors and elected body, have no role to play in the determination of development applications, and that cannot require the officers to refuse a development application.
I'm currently, just before, before we do, before we do, look, I, I, I will, just, just hold on, before I do, I'd just like to say, I'm actually considering whether or not this amendment can be considered as lawful. I'm just currently considering as to whether it's something that can actually be put to the council. However, I'm allowed to actually, I will allow the debate to continue. Councillor Nielsen?
Just a suggestion, Mr Mayor, that councillor Olive is wanting to make a comment. I just thought it would be good for him to elaborate.
That's fine, councillor, councillor Olive.
Yeah, I should have turned this off, I'm sorry. Yeah. We've already got two, two charging stations, so, you know, sort of, you could halt it there, but still impose the cost on those two charging stations. But I take the point, I suspected as much, because it's a development application, but I thought that I'd put it in anyway. So I withdraw, I withdraw number E and C in favour of councillor Nielsen's, you know, sort of, statement on the charges for the parking. But to keep point D in there, that's the, as a warning of what could happen.
Councillor Nielsen, do you accept that?
I'm happy to accept that, and so that will become point F. And, yeah. No, we've got.
No, she accepted C.
I wanted to move it, as I have, and so I have added a point E. So with the suggestion from councillor Olive, his point D becomes point F.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you.
But I'm just sorry, I'm just thinking in terms of making it make more sense. Point, provided that no substantial, da-da-da-da. The nominated fee one should be the last one. So why don't we have, sorry, the council officer that's dealing with this, that becomes F, and F becomes E. I just think it flows on more logically. Oh, okay, sorry about that, okay.
No, it is.
No, but.
Councillor Nielsen, just for the benefit of the meeting, could it, provided that no substantive receipt, that this fee of one thousand dollars is endorsed?
Yes, Mr Mayor, what?
Does that work, just for clarity?
Yes. Are you okay with that, Mr Mayor?
I'm totally fine, it was just, there was some confusion.
Okay, so then as councillor Hamilton's pointing out, we have to delete D, or E would be better to delete, I suppose. Sorry, council officer there, we'll delete E, because E is the same as D. Yep. Yep, so.
Okay.
Are you okay with that, councillor Olive, you paying attention?
Thank you.
So that's what I'm moving, basically, which is pretty much the council report, but with the extra proviso of concern about advertising, and also the most important part, I guess, in the fact that we can review the fee, if in fact we think the fee needs to be reviewed in a, within a year.
Thank you. Councillor Chapel?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I had a proposed amendment, but I don't think I need to move it, I think I can probably resolve it just by asking questions to the council officers, if that's okay. I was wondering with the fee, if our fees are just as a standard practice reviewed every year, so this fee, if we put it in at a thousand dollars, it would automatically be part of a process that sees it levy up, like, kind of ratchet up.
Through to the relevant officer.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Yes, it would be. The only fees that aren't, change the statutory fees.
Could I please ask another question, your worship?
You may.
Proper difference. I was also wondering, as part of the assessment criteria, I know these go through an A I S proposal, I think the concern is that these are large backlit screens that can have quite an impact on the visual amenity of an area. And if, you know, they were close to residential dwellings within an urban centre, for instance, that that impact could be significant. I'm just wondering, as, as the process, you know, the assessment process, is that taken into consideration, and kind of what else is taken into consideration?
Thank you. Through to the acting director of city planning.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Yes, that is a matter for consideration in assessment of the DAs.
Yes, councillor Chapel.
May I please seek leave to ask one further?
Totally fine.
That was just, I think there's a little bit of concern about the size of these things and the visual impact and the growth of them, and would it be possible to get reports to council just on how many applications are coming in and how many are being approved?
Through to the relevant officer. Do you want to answer it?
Through you, Mr Mayor. Yes, that's fine.
Thank you.
In that case, could I add that as just an amendment to the?
Okay, thank you. Just to confirm, we're going to be adding a point F? Is that correct? That council receive?
That regular reports on applications for public vehicle charges and approvals are provided for councillors for noting only.
Okay, thank you. That regular reports are provided to councillors for noting only. Thank you. Thank you, that that is accepted? You may ask a question.
The relevant officer, how many are we talking about? How many actual Jolt charges are there?
Sorry, councillor Sedd can ask the question, councillor, acting director of city planning.
Through you, Mr Mayor. There are two applications pending, which are currently, currently under assessment. And the manager of sustainability advised us the, last week, I think, at the briefing, that there is possibly two to four more that may be proposed down the track.
Just asking, remember, do we really need on two, two?
To clarify, I think it's useful councillors to know where they are, and also to know how they're developing and rolling out in the area. It's not necessarily because I think they're dreadful, Danny.
Okay, thank you. Okay, there's been a request to now, thank you, thank you councillors, there's been a request to put it. Can I, all those in favour of putting the motion, all those, all those against? Declare that carried, thank you. Councillor Nielsen is the, thank you, will now put it. All those in favour of the motion? All those against? I declare that carried. Thank you very much. CS sixty-six slash twenty-two, draft Maroo Junction Public Master Plan, challenged by councillor Rosenfeld. Thank, thank you councillor Nielsen, councillor Rosenfeld, please continue. Could you please outline what it is you're moving?
Okay, I'm, I'm moving it as per the business paper and I, councillor Nielsen, I don't oppose it. I, um, uh, I watched the briefing on Sunday, I wasn't able to come to briefing on Tuesday. Thanks council officers for recording it. Uh, and very exciting to see, uh, a, a lot of these plans from, especially the Maruba Junction, the central Maruba Junction area. Um, and, um, it's exciting to be able to put this to the commu- community for their feedback. Uh, I, um, uh, the only thing I have concern with, and I'm not asking for any amendments because I want to get community feedback on it, but the Wall Street Plaza, uh, in the, in the, um, um, in the briefing, it was mentioned to close the slip lane or possibly close the slip lane running west on Maruba Road into Bunnarong Road. Um, I, I have grave reservations about that. Of, yes, I do want to hear what the public have to say as well. But, um, that slip lane is regularly used by many, many residents and buses, the three fifty goes down there, the four hundred used to, before that was replaced by the three fifty. Um, and, um, um, it's, it, it creates great traffic flow. Um, you may remember a couple of months ago, I spoke about Bayside Council putting a slip lane in across the road on a V P A with Meriton for the Page with Green. They actually put in a slipway and I, I, to my horror on Sunday morning, when I was watching the briefing, I heard we're proposing to take one out. Um, so, um, um, yeah, that, that, I had a bit, a few reservations about that. The other thing about Wall Street Plaza is that road's going to get busier and busier around Bunnarong Road. I don't know how many people, I don't know how pleasant it will be to sit outside, um, and have coffees there. But again, I want, I don't want any amendments, I want it to be put to the public and I want to hear what they have to say, but I wanted to give my point of view. Uh, anyway, and nu- number three about Wall Street Plaza is that the entrance to, um, the Shell service station has two entrances. The most common one's Bunnarong Road, but the other one is in Wild Lane and this will take that out. Plus the, the Thai shop, um, at the back of there. So those businesses will, will, uh, will suffer as a result. So, uh, but again, I'm, I'm happy to put it as, as in the business paper and excited to, to get the feedback and to, uh, when it comes back to council.
Councillor Burst is the second.
Um, I think that slip lane needs to be rethought and through the relevant officer, I think it's important to maybe review that because it's, um, I think it'll be dangerous without it. I'm on the road a lot and, um, that slip lane is, coming from Maruba through to, um, East Gardens, that is a vital slip lane and you can safely move into the traffic. If you remove that, um, we're going to cause more congestion in that intersection as well. So I would just ask that it is reviewed, um, but otherwise I support the rest of the master plan.
Are there any further speakers? There being no further speakers, councillor Rosenfeld closes the debate.
Um, I've said everything I have to say about this matter.
Thank you. All those in favour? All those against? Declare that carried, thank you. C S sixty-seven, uh, slash twenty-two Community High Performance Centre naming request. Councillors, before we move on, um, to this particular matter, I'd just like to remind, um, you, you all of the time and note that we had extensive, uh, okay, thank you. There is a procedural motion moved councillor Rosenfeld, seconded councillor Hamilton. Um, all those i- in favour of the procedural motion, go aye. All those against? No, I declare that carried, thank you very much. Councillor Sid as the mo- No, councillor. Ro- no, uh, this, this was challenged, so the procedural motion was carried. No, so Rosenfeld have, I, I have councillor Sid challenge this item. Yeah, councillor Sid challenged it. Councillor Sid is the mover of the motion. Could you please outline what it is you're moving? I, I believe.
Yeah, I'm, I'm.
I don't rec- I don't recall, also I saw a second, I'm just going to kick, pick bill. Okay, thanks. Councillor Burst is the second.
Mister Mayor, I'm just moving this, that's per recommendation in the business paper. And, um, because I've got the two minutes, I was apprehensive at first about this. Um, but then when I thought about it today and did a little bit of research, um, uh, as I said before, as I asked the speaker, Souths are one of the only clubs that don't rely on poker machine revenue. They actually rely on sponsors to, to gain their revenue. The actual, um, and as we found out today, which actually made me quite happy, that they'll end the sponsorship with Crown next year, by the end of twenty-three. They deliberately looked for a, a sponsor that wasn't a gambling institution, wasn't, they did it according to our values. They actually, if you look it up, Cronulla is sponsored by Point Bet, Penrith is sponsored by Blue Bet. Uh, as the speaker mentioned, the West Tigers, uh, form, High Performance Centre is called, purely just called the Zurich Centre. No mention of West Tigers in there, at least the Rabidows have got Rabidows in its name. Um, the wall on the outside is quite big, I'm sure it won't be too intrusive. Um, as the speaker said, the actual rooms inside the building will be named after legends and also, uh, important people. Um, and actually, I just want to, uh, reiterate that I do need to clarify something and the director might tell me if I'm wrong or not. But the contribution to the Souths, uh, part of this building was four million dollars and council's contribution was three million dollars and the rest came from state and federal money. So we actually put less than what Souths putting in. And this actual sponsorship, if you look at it, actually sort of virtually just falls short of four million dollars. So the sponsorship actually pays for their contribution to the building. So again, it's just sponsorship, it actually means a lot to them to get through. Um, everyone's fighting for a dollar in sponsorship and I commend them for not actually using poker machine money to get to this point. And I also commend them on not sticking to the Randwick Council's values and not, uh, getting, having gambling sponsorship, not having, um, fossil fuel, fossil fuel sponsorship. Thank you.
Um, there is a point of order from councillor Veitch.
Um, we have tried to, uh, institute a ban on sponsorship from gambling companies and fossil fuel companies, but in fact councillor Sid and most of the other councillors vote against it. So I don't know why he's promoting that now and I would ask him to withdraw that comment because in fact we have no ban.
So, hold on, before councillor Sid, unless you're withdrawing the comment, I'll rule on the point of order. Okay, look, I, I, I don't think, I, I think it's part of. Okay, look, thank you. I, 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 I ruled that there is no point of order. Um, councillor Sid, you've completed your remarks, is that correct? Councillor Burst is the second.
I'd just like to commend Souths on, um, and going down this path and looking at sponsorship, um, from a, a more ethical, um, organisation and not going down the poker machine path. So I think we should commend them for that, it's great work and we should say thank you very much. And the last thing we want is Souths to once again, um, be a club that falls into financial disarray and, and is removed from the competition. We certainly don't want that. So, uh, sponsorship is important to these, these clubs. Um, and so a strong Souths, like a strong Roosters, means you've got a strong competition. So I think that's important. Thank you.
Uh, councillor Nielsen, you're.
My amendment is actually basically to oppose this and I sent through, uh, what I intend, um, moving, um, fellow councillors, but I'll explain to you why. Uh, we all know this building is. Have a big pardon?
Second of the amendment, second of councillor Veitch. Please continue, councillor Nielsen.
Thank you very much. This building is a very important and prominent building within Heffron Park. Councils, I believe, should always support names that will withstand the test of time. The Usana Rabidows Centre might be the favourite name now, but who knows in a decade if it will remain the favourite sponsor and therefore would it be the appropriate name? We are all familiar with the annoyance of having to remember whether a football stadium is A on Z or whatever. Of course, I understand if I were a major sponsor, I would want to see my business name up in lights everywhere and even subtly referenced. But councillors, we are talking about a building in our premier sporting field and surely such a building needs a name that will withstand the vagaries of sponsorship. The name will be referenced verbally, visually in publicity and by G P S. Councilors, I urge you all to reject this request and that the Rabidows Football Club suggest a more appropriate name for the Community High Performance Centre. So council, the motion is simply that council note the overall facility remains known as the Heffron Centre. B, refuse the Rabidows Club request to name the Community High Performance Centre only, the Usana Rabidows Centre. C, request the Rabidows Football Club suggest a more appropriate name for the Community High Performance Centre, which would be permanent and would not include the name of a sponsor.
Councillor Veitch is the second of the amendment. Um, before you go, I'm assuming you want to speak on the amendment? Okay, thank you. Councillor Veitch, please continue.
Uh, thank you and I'd like to, yeah, definitely support this amendment. As I said, um, I had not heard of this company. I don't think many people in our community will and I, and I guess that's the advantage for a company like this, to actually get their name out there and associated, uh, with a very prominent club, with a very well-loved club, uh, and a very prominent council building. It will be one of the best-known council buildings, uh, and we have certainly been promoting it, uh, to the death, I would say, almost for, for, for a while now. Um, it will create a lot of attention when this building, uh, opens. I don't know why, uh, this recommendation came to, to council. Um, the company involved may sell particular products, it does sell nutritional products, but it doesn't do that through retail ou- outlets, through, you know, employees who are sales agents. It does it through unpaid, uh, an unpaid, unpaid distribution network. Um, you can look on Wikipedia, you can look it up on Forbes, understanding multi-level marketing, this is an M L M company. You can look at, at its annual report and see that that is how it derives its revenue. And I have to ask councillors just to, to stop and think, do we want the, the sort of optics of having a company that pretends to do one thing but actually gets most of its revenue from doing something else that most people consider to be a very questionable way of deriving income? Uh, which even if you go to the Forbes article on multi, uh, multi-level, uh, marketing companies, has a picture of a pyramid. It's not called a pyramid company, but it is structured like a pyramid and it's. Please, uh, support councillor Nielsen's amendment, thank you.
Thank you very much. Um, I had a hand up firstly from councillor De Souza, but before, then I had councillor Chapel, then councillor Rosenfeld, then councillor Olive. Councillor De Souza.
Thank you, Mister Mayor. Uh, we all know the Shakespearean line, Watson a name. That which we call a rose by any other name would smell as sweet, Shakespeare asks. Name is very, very important. If Souths had, was human, I think their surname would be Getz. Because whatever Souths wants in this community, Souths gets. Do you want to rule on it or shall I keep talking? Because time is of value here. The point I'm making.
Please keep talking.
Thank you, thank you, Mister Mayor. But taking that into consideration, the naming of an institution or an organisation or building must have community consultation. This is a Randwick city asset. And as important, I don't even know of this particular vitamin group, or I do know of it, but not, I don't believe that having its name on a beautiful Heffron Centre is really needed or necessary. Bob Heffron was a great man, he was a great Labour Premier. The centre should be named after him. Rabidows Heffron Centre or Heffron Rabidows Centre. We shouldn't dilute it or discredit this person. This Usana, whatever they are, as has been pointed out, you know, John Proctor in The Crucible says, Watson a name too. He says, the name, that's all I've got. It's all I'll have for a lifetime. And this name is something that will be there for a lifetime. If we're going to do it, let's do it right. We shouldn't name this organisation or use this organisation's name because what it does, it compartmentalises it. It doesn't give it the community aura I believe a centre of this size and nature deserves.
Thank you, councillor Rosenfeld. Sorry, my apologies, councillor Chapel, then councillor Rosenfeld, then councillor Olive.
Thanks, Mister Mayor. Um, I just associate myself with councillor De Souza's comments. Um, I just also want to mention, I, I think one of the things we haven't canvassed is the fact that we're taking the word community out of the name of this centre, which I think does send a message to the community about who this centre is for. And we've been reassured a number of times about how much this is about the local community, who will be included, who will have access. Um, but it looks like it belongs to a corporation and to the Rabidows, which is, um, disappointing message.
Thank you, councillor Rosenfeld.
Yeah, I think there's a misconception that rugby league clubs are, are, are flowing in money and, and don't need extra, extra revenue. Um, um, the, um, um, what, what basically happens, and I, I don't follow Rabidows as everyone knows of, uh, but I follow rugby league quite closely, is that every time there's an increase in revenue, the salary cap goes up, so most of it goes to the place. The clubs need to keep looking for, for other sources of revenue because the, 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 uh, the playgroup is a, is a very powerful group. Uh, and, um, um, I, I, I don't think we can deny the South Sydney Rabidows in, in securing, uh, an, a, a sponsor, another sponsor. Uh, and, and, and instead we should be encouraging to, to, uh, to have a sponsor. Uh, and, um, because tha- that's what rugby league, uh, apart from all the other, uh, revenue streams, um, uh, that's what, uh, rugby league clubs, uh, need to, to prosper in a, in a very, very competitive sporting marketplace. In Australia, we have the most competitive winter sporting marketplace, but virtually of any country in the world with, uh, with quite a few popular sports. Um, so, um, no, I, uh, I don't support the amendment and I, I support the, uh, initial, uh, um, recommendations.
Thank you. Councillor Olive.
Uh, yes, I, I just, uh, was interested in the actual, you know, sort of, uh, clause that came from the, the lease agreement, which, um, if you read it, uh, it says that the, um, the naming rights, the tenant has a right to name the premises with the prior consent of the council. Nowhere in that does it say that, you know, sort of, it can, uh, on-sell that, uh, right. I mean, you'd have to read a lot into that to say that, you know, sort of, um, uh, that the Souths can make, uh, uh, money by on-selling that to other companies. And, uh, uh, and so I think this is a case, you know, sort of, of the tail wagging the dog. And so, you know, sort of, they have taken, taken this and said, well, you know, sort of, this is what, uh, um, you know, sort of, the, uh, the leases have said, well, this is what, you know, sort of, the, um, the leasees, you know, sort of, must, must be doing and they've presented this to council. And so, you know, sort of, on that, uh, on that point, I think that, you know, sort of, it's not something that's, um, uh, that's endorsed at all by, you know, sort of, the lease agreement, is, uh, any kind of sponsorship at all. It's just about the, the naming rights for Souths. It doesn't say anything about making money, it doesn't say any of that in, in that particular, um, clause. The other point that was the one that was, has been made by the speakers and, uh, was made earlier is about, you know, sort of, this, the name could change every four years here, you know, sort of, next, uh, in the, in the four years afterwards, it could be Black, Blackmoor's Rabidows. The four years after, it could be Bitcoin Rabidows, um, you know, sort of, and, uh, so I think that that's something which will make, that could make us dizzy. Um, and, and I argue against it because of that, uh, for that particular reason. And finally, you know, sort of, I, I think that it was, uh, it was said that, you know, sort of, um, council are not putting in as much money as the Rabidows into, into this, uh, centre. Well, I mean, if you like a cape, cut, you know, sort of, a, a slice out and say, well, you know, that's the, that's the bit that they're not putting money into, they're putting money in a sort of, more than half of the, uh, the, the fifty-seven million into the Heffron Centre. They're, they're putting, uh, council are putting heaps into this. So, you know, sort of, I think, uh, that's, have to correct that. Thank you.
Thank you. So councillor Sid wishes to speak. Yep, thank you. Councillor Sid.
Uh, just to clarify, uh, councillor Olive, um, the whole, uh, setup, that building will always be our asset. It's always a council asset. So that's why we put our money into, uh, the whole building. That's, we, we paid for half of it. The total cost is fifty-four dot million dollars and also, uh, Souths put in from grants from the state and federal government. I think, I think it comes to about thirty-eight million or something like that, I don't know the, but it was paid for on their side. So, but is in total our asset. But I'd also, what I want to ask Mister Mayor is, can I ask a relevant officer? That in the leasing agreement, like any commercial lease, are they entitled to put a sign up on the front of the building? Now, I assume Bill Gravie probably could do the same, being our leasee on our side of the building. Um, so is there a provision that they can put up commercial partners and sign it?
Through to the relevant officer.
Through you, Mister Mayor. Uh, that is correct. In relation to, uh, the wording of the amendment in, uh, point C, uh, request that Rabidows suggest a more appropriate name for the High Performance Centre that would not include the name of a sponsor. The agreement for lease and lease, um, special conditions that were adopted by council in two thousand and nineteen, uh, read as follows. Subject to the prior consent of the leasor being counsel, uh, not to be unreasonably withheld. Subject to the prior consent of the lease or being council, uh not to be unreasonably withheld or delayed, the leasing. Obtaining the relevant approvals under the E P N A Act, uh or any other relevant legislation, the leasing being the bunnies may erect signage. On the premises visible from the outside of the premises for the leasing's commercial partners on the terms in this special condition. So uh in terms of item C in the amendment, um I would caution council into the relevance of having a commercial partner on the exterior of the building. Rather uh the relevance of Usana's fit to council's values.
Thank, thank you. I had a hand up from councillor Olive. Having spoken, I'm assuming it's a question. Councillor Olive.
To the relevant staff, um uh given that Souths, you know, sort of are going to lease this. Uh at no no cost to them, their their section of the Heffron Centre for twenty-one years in accounting practices. Will that particular part of the asset be um depreciated by quite a considerable amount?
Through to the relevant officer.
Thank you, uh through you, Mr Mayor. Obviously, the asset will be depreciated, but the quantum of that amount, I'd have to take on notice for the time of this meeting.
Okay, thank you. Before I throw to councillor Hamilton, I actually have a follow-up question from councillor Sid. Um just as it relates to the officer's interpretation of the amendment in line um of, what is it, thirty? That subject to the prior consent of the lesser brackets not to be unreasonably withheld or delayed in br- closed brackets. Um through to the relevant officer, if this amendment um were to be successful, does that uh. Open us up to some potential liability as to whether or not we are unreasonably uh withholding or delaying consent?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Um yes, being contrary to the um provisions uh within the agreement for leasing licence. Um that may invoke the dispute um clauses um within the agreement. Um however, we'll note that um council can refuse its consent, but it needs to be on the basis of a. An issue um with the the particular name of the commercial partner. Um and the organisation not being consistent with council's values, um branding, reputation or ethics.
Thank you, councillor Hamilton.
Um yes, I just wanted to make a couple of comments in response to some of the things that I've heard so far. And I think that uh the fact that sponsorship is, I believe it's being pitched. As a as a dirty thing or an unsavoury thing, but it's something very, very necessary. And I think the speaker really made a good point in identifying the fact that a lot of Australian uh sponsors are not able to. Spread their money around or there's just not enough sponsors. Um and the other thing I wanted to point out is that. If the Rabidows do change the name, it's not unheard of. Etihad Stadium in Melbourne is now called Marvel Stadium. So they changed their sponsors. So it's not unheard of for any stadium, sports ground. Uh we've even changed names of some of our parks and spaces. Uh it's not unheard of and I just think that we really are. Uh you know, exaggerating some of the uh nuances and some of the needs. That this particular club is uh partaking because it's normal.
Councillor Pandefini.
Yeah, I just, yeah, I'd I'd like to just say, I don't think we're uh calling sponsorship a dirty word at all. I think we're questioning this company, which I at at a quick little Google. Comes up with some questionable um practices and, you know, it's really disappointing um that. That we couldn't have got a more kind of, you know, if if it was needed, a more recognisable brand. Um the owner of the Rabidows, seventy-five percent stakeholder, Mike Cannon-Brooks, is a billionaire. So this is not, this is not, and his right into sustainability, councillor said, that's exactly right. And he, this is not a club that is po- caught, you know, po- like poor. What we're questioning here is the company that they have decided to use. Do we want the name to change? It isn't unheard of, but do we want it constantly to change? Could we request that they maybe think about talking to their seventy-five percent stakeholder about some. More kind of acceptable um options um and potentially, you know, look at some of his maybe sustainable businesses. That he owns or, you know, investments that he owns at Lassian, like, yes, that's right, councillor said. So uh birth, so we um I don't think we're saying it's a dirty word, I'm just saying, like, think of the community who are all invested in this. They're gonna be like, what is Asana? Google it and it's disappointing. So, thank you.
There's questions. Uh ca- councillor Hamilton is on her feet, I'll then go to councillor Luxford. Councillor Hamilton.
My question is, um just based on what we're what we've heard and okay, I'll take back back my point. That it sounds like a dirty word, uh sponsorship, I should clarify. But could I ask through you to a relevant officer? Uh is it liable that we are speaking about a sponsor based on. Our online research right now. I just, I'm a bit, I'm a bit concerned that it's on the record. That we have now to the community who could read or, uh you know, listening um right now, that we have said such. Drastic and serious accusations against the sponsor of that club. Just concerned about what the legal ramifications might be.
All right, through to the relevant officer.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Um really, i- it is a matter for councillors to um come to their own conclusions. Based on um the information they they have before them and um the information that they've researched. Um in in terms of the reputation of another company and what council um makes of it. Um certainly, I would sort of caution councillors, um if they are putting something in the public arena about a particular company. That there is that basis and justification for making those comments.
Um councillor Luxford has a question or a comment.
Clarification here. Whose centre of excellence is it really? Ours or theirs?
Through to the relevant officer.
Thank you, through you, Mr Mayor. The asset remains on council's books. The leased area within the high, oh sorry, the leased area within the Heffron Centre. Is known as a commu- community high performance centre, which will be leased to the Rabidows, but the entire. The community high performance centre, but the asset remains council's. Um I have received advice from the Rabidows that should uh council decide. Um otherwise, the 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 centre may also be referenced as the Asana Community High Performance Centre in law of the Community Rabidow Centre. As an alternate option.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Luxford, did you have any comments further than that or you're, okay, thank you. Okay, there there was. Look, look, we we are in a room full of purists. Councillor. Councillor Rosenfeld has moved that it be put, um seconded by councillor Sid. All those in favour.
Can I make, excuse me, can I just make one clarification? Based on, sorry councillor Rosenfeld, I appreciate your wanting to move this, but I wanted to make one clarification of point C. To respond to the advice that was given by the council officer in terms of the appropriateness of point C. And I think by including, inserting one word potentially, will allev- alleviate any uh legal. Um ramification. So in the um second last ni- line where it says, which would be permanent and would. Potentially not include the name of a sponsor. So we would be, hopefully, if you support this amendment. You are asking Rabidows to go back and think of a more appropriate name. And but we are saying would potentially not include the name of a sponsor, but we are not saying it must absolutely not include the name of a sponsor. But hopefully, they would come back with um a name that would be something that they would be proud of. For generations to come and they wouldn't be having to change the name of their High Performance Centre. Um because they get a different sponsor every five, ten years or whatever.
Um look, there is a, sorry, no, hold on, there's actually a motion to put it. Um put the motion, it's a proceed, it's a, hold, okay, thank you. There is actually a procedural motion as to whether or not to put it. We'll then vote as to whether or not to put it. If you would then like to withdraw your seconding, I will then call for another second, then I will put it. But it being a procedural motion, it needs to actually happen immediately. I did allow councillor Nielsen to speak. I I accept that. Anyway, not on an amendment, not on an amendment. Anyway, thank you. All those in favour of the procedural motion? I, all those against? I declare the procedural motion carried. We'll now put the motion as it is an amendment. Sorry, we'll now put the amendment as it is an amendment, there is no reply. All those in fa- okay, sorry, councillor Veach will withdraw her name, is there a news? Okay, thank you. Councillor Chapel as the seconder, as the new seconder, thank you. All those in favour of the amendment? Okay, so there's been a call for a division. Okay, councillor Pandefini, councillor Nielsen, councillor Veach. Councillor Chapel, councillor Luxford, councillor Olive, thank you. Uh all those against? Councillor Hamilton, councillor Hay, councillor Rosenfeld, councillor McCafferty, councillor Wilson. Councillor Sid, councillor Burst, councillor D'Souza and the mayor. I declare the amendment lost. Thank you. We now move to the debate on the motion. Are there any, there being no, okay, thank. Uh okay, are there any further speakers? There being no further speakers, I'm a cla- to close the debate, mover? Thank you.
I just want to remind um everyone that it actually, the the name Heffron Centre stays there. Uh no, actually, people said it was going. There was actually a speaker saying Heffron was being removed from the building, so it's not being removed. So just wanted to point out that it still remains the Heffron Centre.
Thank you. There being no further speakers, I'll now put the motion as moved by councillor Sid. All those in favour, I, okay, there is a call for a division. Thank you. All those in favour, please raise your hand. Thank you, councillor Hamilton, councillor Hay. Councillor Rosenfeld, councillor McCafferty, councillor O- Wilson, councillor Sid, councillor Burst, councillor D'Souza and the mayor. All those against, please raise your hand. Councillor Pandefini, Nielsen, Veach, Luxford, Chapel, Olive. I declare the motion carried. I believe all councillors have voted. Yeah, yeah, all councillors, that's fifteen. No, thank you. We now move to the next item. Uh C O sixty-four slash twenty-two investment policy challenged by councillor Olive. Councillor Olive.
Uh yes, um uh I, uh the relevant officer, uh there, there's amendment come up, thank you very much. Um okay, that uh um I am asking for this investment policy to be adopted. But uh it'd be noted that point seven of the investment policy is in is titled ethical investments. And if you go to page two uh fifty-eight, you'll see ethical investments there. And I'll read this out to you. It says um fossil fuel companies, that's under that, where finance and financial institutions are offering equivalent investment returns. With the same credit ra- rating and the investment fits with the provisions of this investment policy. Preference will be given to placing funds with institutions identified as not dealing with fossil fossil fuel companies. Um all I'm asking for is that in our regular investment reports, that council provide the details of its ethical. Investments portfolio as per um part B. So this is just, it's formally part of our policy. But I just want the transparency there so that we can see exactly, you know, sort of how much uh according to this criteria. We uh we um we have in our ethi- ethical investment portfolio.
Um, okay, councillor Sid is the seconder. Okay, thank you. Are there a- any further speakers? There being no further speakers, councillor Olive, I assume you don't wish to close the, you wish to close the debate? Okay, thank you. All those in favour? All those against, declare that carried. Thank you. N M one 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 twenty-two, notice a motion from councillor Burst investigating a park gym in Wilmere. Reserved, moved. Councillor Burst, do I have a seconder? I saw Danny just, uh are are you happy to, seconded by councillor D'Souza? Okay, thank you, councillor Burst.
I'm a firm believer that we need a fifth and healthy Randwick City Council community. And um adding gyms to our parks allows our community to get out there, exercise. Um with the financial burden we now have, um with itch rates going up, this is an opportunity to go and exercise. There's, you don't need to join a gym, you don't need to pay twenty dollars a week or whatever it is. You can actually go out and do exercise and be fit and healthy in your community and Randwick council is supporting it. Thank you.
Councillor D'Souza, okay, thank you. Councillor Chapel.
Thank you. Um just a question to the relevant officer. Um I obviously don't oppose gyms, gyms are great. Um but does council have a kind of overarching plan that we use to determine where we put gym and kind of gyms and have a kind of comprehensive? Plan for rolling them out? Uh because I, that seemed more desirable than kind of spot action.
Through to the relevant officer.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. We don't have a overarching gym plan as such. We're currently embarked on a on an overarching playground plan that's due to come to council. Uh very shortly. Um we are guided by um uh outdoor gyms um from a from a council officer perspective. Based on plans and management, uh and master plans and the like, so I'm often those um documents dictate where they'll arise. Um outside of that, it's generally by council resolution at this stage.
Thank you. Are there any further speakers? There being no further speakers, councillor Burst waves his rights, we'll now put it. All those in favour? All those against, declare that carried. Thank you. Uh N M one one two twenty-two, notice a motion from councillor Burst, installation of a water bubbler at the Calora Community Centre. Moved councillor Burst, seconded councillor Sid. Councillor Burst.
I receive the opportunity to be at the Calora Community Centre um with my learned fellow councillor and mayor, Dylan Barker. And um one of the things that did come up is that um they, kids play out in the back a lot behind the community centre. And so they were quite um saying if we only had some bubblers out there for the kids so they could have a drink on a warm, hot day. Um and support the community centre. So uh that's all I've got to say. I think it's a great idea. The community would love to have it. Um so I hopefully will have your support on this. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Sid is the seconder of the motion. Thank you. Are there any further speakers? Count- uh councillor D'Souza has an amendment?
I'm sure it'll be accepted. So, you know, I'm a dog lover, we should have a little uh little. You know, s- container or or with the water that drips, that we have uh some form of source for animals to get it. Feed as well, drink.
Yep, thank you. Um in in light of the fact that it is contained within the motion, I I take it that it doesn't need to be moved. Um there being no further speakers, I will now, um I take it that councillor Burst doesn't wish to speak to in reply. Thank you, I'll now put it. All those in favour? All those against, declare that carried. Thank you. N M one one three slash twenty-two, notice a motion from councillor Sid, plaque for the Heffron Centre. Moved councillor Sid, seconded by, I actually saw councillor Rosenfeld first, he was very quick. Um seconded by councillor Rosenfeld, councillor, councillor councillor Sid. Councillor Sid, do you wish to speak to the motion?
Yes, Mr Mayor. Uh Mr Mayor, um this is the biggest build in council's history and there's a lot of councillors are quite proud of the actual. Way this was performed. We actually, the uh council officers put a lot of time and effort into this, obviously. Um and it will be a tremendous asset to the community. Um so when we laid the foundation stone, we put all the names of these. We knew there was gonna be an election, we knew that some of the councillors were retiring, so we laid a foundation stone with the names of those councillors on there. So that they would have some form of legacy to our biggest build we ever had. Some, now we have new councillors. What I'm proposing is that, again, we put all the names on the plaque, because our tradition is usually just to put the mayors on there. So if we put all the names on the plaque and as we did with the foundation stone, if you don't want to be part of that legacy, you can just opt out. No harm, no problems, that's it.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Rosenfeld is the seconder.
And I fully support that. Uh I think it's a great uh.
And I fully support that. Uh I think it's a great uh centre, fantastic, it's in Central Ward. I'd love to be able to have my name on the plaque, uh 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 as well as, as well as the previous couns- uh councillors on the, on the previous council. Uh so, a hundred percent support it.
Thank you. There being no further speakers. Councillor Sedd, do you wish to close the debate? Okay, thank you. All those in favour? All those against, declare that carried. N M one one four twenty-two, large outdoor broadcast from councillor Hay for locations for sporting events in the twenty twenty-four Olympics moved. There is a procedural motion?
Uh basically, the, this motion, uh N M one one four slash twenty-two and N M one one five slash twenty-two are fundamentally the same thing. It's about getting our community outside to watch live games. Um so what I'm proposing is that we actually, as it is Christmas, and Christmas is a time of giving and sharing, that we actually put these two motions together as one. And um then we have a, we ha- have one motion um and one report. Because otherwise, we're just going to be doing two separate reports that effectively are the same thing. It's about having people out, having live sites, having um all that sort of thing, so.
Okay, before I put the procedural motion, I'd just like to clarify something. The first is um that the text which will be the principal motion will be that from councillor Hayes, or it's that you wish to incorporate the two? And merge them together? Okay, so you'd like to merge the two motions. Um the second is councillor Chapel, do you actually consent to that? No, okay, all right, that's fine. To- totally fine. Procedural motion has now been moved, moved councillor Burst, seconded by councillor Hamilton. Okay, we'll now put the procedural motion. All those in favour? All those against? On the voices, I declare that lost. Okay, thank you. Councillor Hay um as the mover of the motion, seconded by, seconded by councillor Luxford. Uh councillor Hay.
Um I'd like to ask, I'm moving this in a slightly amended form. Um I do share the concerns that a lot of people have, that there are quite a few too many reports. Um and so what I've put, I've changed the wording slightly so that it'll be discussed at the twenty twenty-three event review. Uh I'd like to remind everyone that we are in the process of hiring a new general manager, and we're also in the process, or we perhaps we haven't started it exactly yet, but we're uh looking at an additional directorship. Uh so we're bringing in two very new senior staff who uh pa- who can lead us in an event review. And they can uh put their stamp on uh Randwick council, you know, in in consultation with the councillors. So having a, this sort of thing discussed at the event review is uh what I have in mind. Um mostly the, but the text of the motion remains the same, so we all uh a lot of people spoke to it i- in the Merrill Minute. Uh the World Cup, uh um Argentina versus Australia was a phenomenal success as an event. I great, I have very fond memories, memories of the twenty fourteen uh Rabidows Grand Final where we won, and I watched that on Coogee Beach. Uh we should look at, it's one of the best things that Randwick council does, it's very well received by the community, we should look at doing it more often. Uh specifically, uh I've noted that the Rugby World Cup in twenty twenty-three, I haven't put Matilda's in there because I didn't want to step on uh councillor Veach's. That's right, councillor, uh Chap- Chapel's motion. Uh yes, but uh we should look at doing a lot more, particularly into the twenty twenty-four Olympics. Uh and uh, you know, considering the, we're on the grass, uh considering um other groups and so on. I commend this motion.
Councillor Luxford as the seconder?
Um. Yeah, I reserve all right.
Thank, th- thank you. Um there's a hand up from councillor Veach, councillor Veach.
Um, look, I commend councillor Hay for the motion. I was unfortunately not able to attend. Uh my son got Covid. We didn't want to leave him by himself to watch the uh the game, so. So I was, uh we were all very disappointed not to be able to attend, and I gather it was a fantastic event. But um I don't know that we should have broadly been looking at doing this on a really regular basis because we can see from the Merrill Minute that it was very, very expensive. I totally support it. You know, the World Cup, and we'll certainly be supporting councillor Chapel's motion. But if we're going to be doing more events such as this, shouldn't we be paying, for for those large uh, for those large um expensive outdoor events, we should actually be encouraging like live music, live performance and actually paying. That's, it does cost a lot of money, and actually I feel that that could be invested in uh actually, you know, supporting the live music industry uh and local performers, uh because if we, this could end up costing one or two hundred thousand dollars a year. And I just think it would, as much as it's fantastic, I'm sure people love it. Uh on balance, uh we shouldn't be supporting live music or that type of thing, some kind of performance.
Thank you. Question from councillor Hamilton.
Thank you, Mister Mayor. My question is to uh the mover of the motion, councillor Hay. And I'm just looking at uh the other, the second motion from councillor Chapel in comparison. How many, so councillor Hay, you're saying events such as the Soccer World Cup and the Rugby World Cup. And councillor Chapel is saying all games, but how many games, yep, all games? And how many games were you proposing from the Soccer World Cup and the Rugby World Cup? Only Australian versus what are the other country games?
Uh I haven't been uh specific in the motion, but in the back of my mind, I was thinking, much like the Soccer World Cup, we only did the one game which was in the knockouts. Um we, but i- it it's in for review. I hadn't uh proposed to do a a huge number of events. But just the big ones that draw the community together. That is what I was thinking.
Um I, I had councillor Panda Feeny first, then councillor Nielsen, councillor Panda Feeny.
Um just a question to the um to councillor Hay. Do you, do you feel as though, like, I understand that you'd be uh proximity to local businesses and economic benefits? I mean, I have noticed that lots of the, our venues have been hosting these. Would this be a bit of a conflict and take away their business?
Well, n- not necessarily. I mean, specifically, uh I was speaking with Ms Anderson about, Ms Katie Anderson about this. Um one of the advantages of having it at uh Murbra Beach was that all the local cafes um got a lot of extra trade that day. Uh it might make one, it's something to consider that uh we wa- would want uh visitors to Randwick Council to experience different parts of the council. And al- also that, that also ties into considering a variety sort of location. So we wouldn't put everything always at Murbra Beach or Coogee Beach, we could put, we could move it around. Uh and that's where I was heading with that.
Um, uh councillor Nielsen, councillor Nielsen.
Oh, thank you, Mayor. Um I'm just a little bit concerned about, uh I guess, costs, um how's it all going to work? And I can see you have here that the part of the twenty twenty-three event review. But um I think that there needs quite a lot of discussion and probably a report. I I think in fact maybe it would be more useful to have a report um somewhere prominently in this motion. Councillor Hay, yes, we've got review, but to me, an event review is slightly different from a report because uh a review is, well, I don't know, I I guess, I I just am concerned about how many events that our poor event team, uh which they do so incredibly well. Uh and then taking up the point that councillor Veach made about um music as well. Um and then the other uh thing that we're often talking about at more art events and so on and so forth. The number of ev- events that council is supposedly or in the process, or perhaps will do um is very expensive. And then we also too, we're talking about the disability inclusion plan and us wanting to spend more for the community development team, which to my mind is hugely important for our community. And I'm just wanting us, I'm not wanting us to run to our budget to be too stretched with everything. It's not, but it's nice that we have flexibility within our budget as well. So I guess what I'm wondering is, um at what point um does the mover of the motion in intend that a report would be brought to us and um the event review, when is that going to happen?
Well, my understanding is the event review will happen early uh next year. And I should defer that question to, through the mates of the relevant officer.
Through to the acting. Through to the acting director of city planning.
Thank you, Mister Mayor. Um we're proposing to have the events review in mid-February. I think it was around about the fourteenth, that's always what we're looking at at this point.
Thank, thank you. Um councillor, councillor Chapel.
Thanks, Mister Mayor. I want to speak briefly in favour of this. I think it's a good idea to have it considered as part of the event review. Um I I personally would not be that keen on having big events on the Randwick racecourse, but I trust our council officers to consider appropriately the costs and the benefits to our community and what the desire is going to be. And certainly, if the Olympics is on and there's another Cathy Freeman two hundred metre race, um I think we probably want to have screens somewhere for our community. Um but I I trust the team to decide that.
Councillor Sedd.
Just very quickly, Mister Mayor, I agree with councillor Chapel. And why I agree is that it is a review. And maybe the events team or whoever's writing the review might come back and say, it's impossible to do. We can only do two or three, we might do one, we can do this, we can do that. So it's a review, we'll wait back. They don't have to do everything that you've got on there, and they'll come back and tell us. So it's a review, so I don't see.
Uh tha- tha- thank you. Just before I put the motion, I I might actually move, um I will not move, request through the chair to the mover of the motion, um if he would consider after the words, uh offering more outdoor public broadcast of sporting events, or afterwards of sporting events, um or other uses, such as screenings of, you you know, outdoor cinemas, um major other events, y- y- you know, I do, I am aware that other councils do do screenings for, y- y- you know, children's movies and things like that at particular times, just so that it isn't exclusively considering sporting events.
Yeah, we can have those words, that's fine.
Thank you. Other uses. Yep, thank you. Um councillor Burst, do you wish to?
I'd like to propose a, an amendment to this motion, that we add a line that council officers bring back a report on the feasibility of showing all Matilda's games during the two thousand twenty-three.
I- is it really necessary?
Border, that's really rude. He's got bad behaviour. I think you should retract that. Thank you, councillor Burst.
What I will do is pause for a moment to allow councillor Burst to consider his amendment.
All I'm saying is why have two reports when you can have one? Let's take the workload off. We're talking about workload on our events team, let's take it away, put it in one motion.
I I have, I have a question. Does councillor Burst have a seconder? Okay, councillor Burst does not have a sec- Uh okay, ca- councillor Hay, before, do you, do you accept the amendment?
Um I'll, I'll kindly ask that we discuss Matilda's events uh at the next motion. So if you want to, if you could please withdraw, that that'd be good.
In the interest of um it being Christmas time and it's a time of giving, um I will withdraw that motion.
How civil. There being.
I was just going to say no amendments, but um um what I'd like to see is if the Roosters, next time the Roosters make the World Cup, if we can have it at Burrows Park.
Yeah, I I take that as a, as a sarcastic remark. Um for, for all journalists or community members who may potentially be listening. Um councillor Hay, would you like to please close the debate? Thank you, councillor Hay, um has closed the debate. I'll now put the motion. All those in favour? All those against, declare that carried. Thank you. Um we now move to N M one one five twenty-two, notice a motion from councillor Chapel. Screens of Matilda's games moved, councillor Chapel, seconded councillor Luxford, councillor Chapel.
Thanks, everyone. I don't think we need to go into great detail, but just only to respond a little to councillor Hamilton's concerns, it would be only the Matilda's games. I I imagine there's not going to be, oh, okay, yeah, great, okay. Abuse, okay, yes. So I think it would probably be, hopefully about eight games would be a nice number. Um but it depends, yeah, definitely the final, um but I just think it would be really exciting and my girls would love it.
Okay, councillor Luxford?
Um just briefly, um yeah, I'm in support of this motion. We saw what happened when um the guys were playing their game. Um this is the world game, and we need to ensure that the world game is alive and kicking in Randwick. So yes, um bring on the Matildas, because we do have one of the best female soccer te- uh football teams in the world, right here in our own country. So this will encourage um the sport to keep going.
Sorry, can I just make a very brief comment that what is being moved is aligned different to what's on the notice paper? It's substantively the same form, but it just includes consideration for additional resourcing, so.
Yep, thank you. Councillor Sedd.
Uh Mister Mayor, I won't oppose this, but I do want to remind councillors, and as councillor Veach said, that it does come at a cost. There'd be about a hundred thousand dollars spent on this, um and there will be venues displaying it, but I won't oppose it. But at the same time, I just want to remind certain councillors that when I proposed to improve fi- uh soccer fields for female players, that I got a bit of feedback, and I only was asking for about forty thousand, fifty thousand, and this is about a hundred thousand. So I prefer that money to go to fixing our sporting facilities, especially for female players, but I can oppose it. Thank you.
Councillor Hamilton, then councillor Burst.
Um I feel like we're, we're back in the, the old days where everyone ha- says something and it sh- shifts your mind a little bit. Because that point there was fantastic from councillor Sedd about, um you know, putting money into permanent uh facilities for female sports. However, I absolutely support this because this is the kind of thing that encourages activation. And so when students, when young girls and when boys and everyone come out to these events, their family members, they, that that excitement rubs off, and it gets, you know, it puts into motion uh the inclusion and the um uptake of sporting uh across the whole LGA. So I think this is fantastic.
Councillor Burst.
I'll certainly be supporting this motion. Um I remember um at Maruba Soccer when the women, uh when girls teams first started happening down there, it was fantastic, because it was exciting to see them uh come into um, come and start playing. This will be an opportunity to increase women's participation in, in sport. And the World Cup will create the next generation of heroes for some of the young girls out there. So it's, I can't wait, it'll be fantastic, um it'll be exciting, and uh bring it on and go to Matilda's.
Thank you. There's been a motion to put it. All those in favour of the procedural motion? All those against, declare that carried. Thank you. Uh councillor Chapel? Well, it was carried, it was carried. You don't wish to close the debate? Okay, thank you. All those in favour of the motion, aye, all those against, declare that carried. Thank you very much. Um questions? Okay, thank you. Uh N R four slash twenty-two, notice a recission motion submitted by councillor Sedd. Yep, thank you. Q N seven slash twenty-two, a question. Does it?
No, I think, I think, I think that they actually have to be moved, that they have to be read and noted, don't they?
Seeking advice from the acting general manager. The question was asked as to, as it relates to a question on notice, whether or not you can do a follow-up question. I I had, that, that, that was my view. I was just going to seek the advice as well. I had, that was my view. I was just going to seek the advice, as well they'll do it. The advice from the acting general manager is that that can be the case. Councillor Veach.
Thank you and thank you for, to all the staff for providing responses to this question, these questions. One follow-up question related to the amount of hours allocated to community use. I'm trying to find the bit now, but it's 520 hours, it's a minimum of 520 hours per week. Which is weird, it's, well, it's obviously 10 hours per week, which does seem quite minimal. Some of the councillors, councillor De Souza was there and other Greens councillors attended a yarn up down at Marperoo's recently. It was put to us that, very specifically, that community members would actually, are specifically seeking access to these community rooms that they have heard are going to be in the Heffron Centre and they want to know how they're going to go about it. There has been mentioned made, you know, of different groups that might. Can I just have the preamble? I actually find this bullying. I'm going to put in a complaint. I actually find this consistent points of order for no reason bullying, because no one does it to you, councillor.
So councillors, so councillors, okay. There is a code of conduct process which occurs outside of the council meeting. Councillor Hamilton is entitled to raise a point of order. I actually have to hear the point of order. Councillor Hamilton, could you please read the point of order or hear it or say?
Point of order is that questions with notice, according to the code of meeting practice, it is 3.15. The councillor is not permitted to ask a question with notice under the clause. And so I think that what we're doing is, we are, the councillor has asked her questions and she's got her responses.
Okay. Thank you councillor Hamilton. Without having the code of meeting practice in front of me, as the acting general manager has it, I'm just going to seek his advice as it relates. Could you please restate the particular clause? 3.15. Look, thank you very much councillor Hamilton. I rule that there is no point of order under 3.15. As a councillor is not permitted to ask a question with notice under clause that comprises a complaint against the general manager or a member of staff or a question that implies wrongdoing by the general manager or a member of staff of the council. I rule that there is no point of order. Councillor Veach, please continue.
Thank you very much. Yeah, so I know, well, just anecdotally, we have heard firsthand that there are community members who would like to access these community facilities. I do note that the response said that it is a minimum of 520 hours. Could we make representations to Souths to seek additional hours down the track? I mean, if there was community demand, because it would be good to have that access. It's such a central area, there'll be a lot of people going there, it's accessible by public transport. So it would be an ideal location for people to go and meet.
Thank you. Through to the relevant officer.
Thank you. Through you, Mr Mayor. Those two areas do reside within the South East area. They themselves are looking to provide the extensive range of community services within specifically the classroom through South Cares. I do know that Souths have been liaising with local stakeholders in regards to the use of those rooms when they're not using them. That as you correctly mentioned, the time, 520 hours, so roughly 10 hours a week is a minimum. And just judging by the conversations that the Rabidows are having with our community groups, in addition to the South Cares relationships, that like all the facilities and the park in the rear would be more than happy to share when they're not being used by their own programmes. I'm also, sorry, through you, Mr Mayor, happy to, if you do have any contact details from any community groups, to extend those through to the Rabidows appropriate groups.
Thank you. I just have to move that the questions are noticed, been noted. All those in favour, thank you. NR4/22, notice of rescission motion submitted by councillor Sedg, Burst and Rosenfeld, community engagement studies outcome of the public exhibition. I need to now move that the resolution as passed be and is hereby rescinded. Councillor Sedg, that's what you're moving? That's correct. Okay, there's been no debate on the rescission motion. We then put the rescission motion. All those in favour? Aye. All those against? I declare that carried. There's been a request for a division. Thank you. There's a request for a division? Okay. All those in favour of the rescission? Okay, thank you. We've got councillor Hamilton, councillor Nielsen, councillor Hay, councillor Luxford, councillor Rosenfeld, councillor McCafferty, councillor Wilson, councillor Sedg, councillor Burst, councillor De Souza and the mayor. I declare the rescission motion carried. Councillor Sedg, could you please now move your motion?
I'm just recommending that I move this as per recommendation, as per the business paper. I also just wanted, just to, thankfully, the director, acting director of city planning sent through an email. I hope everyone read it. The reasons why this is significant. And just to put it in plain speak, if you, as in point B, if you remove a development officer making a site exempt. All I'm trying to do is, one of the biggest complaints we have from our residents is that planning does take a little bit too long. And this will just add more and more time to very simple requests of, if you've got an owner who wants to, his neighbour asks him to make a slight adjustment to his build, whether it be a renovation whatsoever. They both agree that, yes, they will do that adjustment. The planning of, at the moment, the planning officer, the senior council planning officer also agrees that it's no big deal, but so it goes through. But if this goes through, they all agree, yet it has to have another 14 days on exhibition. It has to have probably another 14 days. And when we say 14 days, we're probably talking about six months. So this is just going to add so much time, so much work to our planning department, so much extra time to our residents. Inflation rates are going up every day. People just can't afford the time and the money and the effort to wait around for small, very minor infractions to go through the whole process again. So that's the only reason why. And I do note that in the business paper, as per the recommendation, that this went through extensive community engagement strategy and no one from our residents came up with any of these ideas. So our community is quite happy with the process. So why don't we just stick with what the committee is happy with?
Thank you. Councillor Burst is the seconder, then there is councillor Olive.
Reserve the right.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Olive, would like to move an amendment.
I'd like to move an amendment to this motion and you'd see it there, that note the draft community engagement has been developed following extensive community consent and resolve to adopt the community engagement strategy with the removal of the line at the bottom of page 33. A development may be exempt from requiring site notices if the opinion, if in the opinion of the senior council planning officer, the proposal will not result in adverse impacts on the broader community. If you look on page 33 and level three, the list of, the list of type of developments that that pertains to, they are the type of developments that will impact on the broader community. If there are changes to those of any type, they should be notified. If it's something rather simple, like putting a site notice on the actual development. So this is not something which is going to take a lot of time or resources. It's something straightforward to do and I think it's appropriate that we should be letting the community know when these changes come about.
Thank you. Do I have a second by councillor Veach? Are there any further speakers on the proposed amendment? Are there any further speakers? I didn't assume, sorry, shouldn't assume. There being no further speakers on the amendment, I now put the amendment. All those in favour? All those against? I declare the amendment lost. Okay, councillor, are there any further speakers on the community engagement on the motion as moved? I have a question of the mover, which is, and I apologise that this is on the fly. If you were to add an additional point, that council receive a further report considering in the development application reports, the inclusion of the name of the owner in line with other councils across Sydney. Whether or not you accept that? No, it's up to, it's up to you. It's just, it's a request. Other councils do it. Some do. It's all right. It's just a request. I look at it from a transparency and integrity perspective, that you know who the owner, the applicant is. Because often it comes in the name of the planning company.
When we, so if, does the majority of DAs come through a plant, sorry, an architect or a designer of some type, rather than a building developer?
The applicant could be the owner, it could be the architect, it could be the builder, it could be anyone with the authorisation of the owner.
So follow-up question. So just when people do want to question a DA, does it go to the applicant, the actual question? So if I'm living next door to someone, goes to the applicant or the?
Yes, the principal contact would be with the applicant regarding any queries about the DA.
It's a question for you. It's a matter for you councillor Sedg, whether or not you accept it. No? Not, not? Okay, okay. That's fine. I will now put the motion as moved. Yeah, yeah, I didn't. That's fine. Thank you. And now put the motion. All those in favour?
This is actually eliminate or bring down the use of CDCs? Or it actually, if we were to, if we were to go to an amendment, would actually encourage CDCs? I'm just inquiring for myself, because I'm trying to get away from CDCs and all this whole CDCs going through it. So the DAs go quicker. Good, thanks.
Thank you. Anyway, all those in favour? All those against? Declare that carried. Thank you very much. We now move to confidential items. Could we please turn off the live stream?
Thank you very much. I can please return to the outcome of the confidential meeting. GM 30/22 was carried, CP 82/22 was carried, CS 68/22 was carried, CS 69/22 was carried, CS 70/22 was carried, CS 71, the amendment was lost and the recommendation on the business paper was carried, CO 65/22 was carried, CO 66/22, the motion as moved by a council of each was lost, the foreshadowed motion as moved by councillor Hay and Rosenfeld was carried. There being no further business, I declare the meeting closed at 9:53pm.
Thanks Mr May.